Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
This budget meeting of Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, to order. Before we get started, I was going to take a point of personal privilege and like to apologize to whoever it was I tried to run off the road on South Louise. Good afternoon. I'd like to call this budget hearing Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, to order. Did you hear me? You start over. I'd like to call this budget meeting of Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, to order. Before we get started, I was going to take a point of personal privilege and like to apologize to whoever it was I tried to run off the road on South Louise Avenue last week. On Saturday, I was listening to Shannon Nordstrom's Under the Hood Show about transmissions and wasn't paying attention, so if it was any of you, I sincerely apologize for that. We're going to jump right into our first one, which is always the dynamic and effervescent Sean Pritchard in finance.
Good afternoon, Council. Sean Pritchard, I'm here to present the first of four budget hearings that will be occurring over the course of the next month. The budget hearings we'll be following are One Sioux Falls Framework, and today's focus will be on foundational growth. So in addition to the financial overview, which I will be providing today, we will be followed with a personnel overview and the HR budget, innovation and technology, public works, then the finance department specifically, centralized facilities and public parking, at which time after that we'll open it up for an extended period of questions in related to anything that was discussed today or anything that you've kind of come to mind as you've gone through the budget book that was presented to you a little over a week ago. First of all, I do want to extend my thanks to all the staff of the city who participated in generating the budget as it was presented to you. In particular, I want to thank the staff of our finance department. They've been working for approximately seven months in pulling this together. The level of professionalism and expertise and passion that they provide in putting this together, I think, is unequal, and I think there aren't many cities in the country that probably have the strength of our team that we have here at the city of Sioux Falls. So I do want to extend my thank you to them. Also, a lot of work has gone into making the budget book, which was reformatted last year, much more usable, friendly, and tell the story of exactly how we are allocating our finances here at the city of Sioux Falls. And then this year culminating in the reformatting of the 2022 through 2026 capital program as well. And so certainly would appreciate any feedback you have for continued improvements we can make in that regard. Before I start off, I guess I would start by setting the stage for the 2022 budget proposal. Like any good novel or documentary, it's good to kind of tell you how the story begins in terms of the budget and where it kind of emanates from. Obviously, the budget provides a roadmap and a plan for allocating the finite resources of the city, but we want to do so in a way that maximizes the quality and efficiency of the governmental services that we are here to provide. More than that, it tells a story, how we will execute the mission, core values, and critical services that the city provides each and every day. Over the course of the budget presentations today and over the next several weeks, you're going to see several key themes resonate that tell the story of how the city intends to execute its mission in 2022 and beyond. These themes say to us what the what, the why, and the how are that we intend to accomplish these objectives. Development of the budget must contextualize external factors, such as the status of our local economy and the community. Scaling for growth is that first theme. It's the what theme that we have. It's understanding the dynamics of our current growth and scaling to the provision of the services to reflect the growth of our broader community with an eye toward a long-term vision. Ultimately, the core functions of our government is to provide public services and to ensure public safety, economic security, and enhanced quality of life for our residents. It's important to connect these services of our city government with the people in our community. It is our goal to maximize the delivery of those services to ensure that the excellence is matched with efficiency, and that in turn tells you the why. We accomplish this by investing today and living out our mission of investing today for a better tomorrow, to ensure that we can meet the long-term needs of our community. It goes beyond responding to basic needs and current challenges, but it includes investing in new projects, in programs and strategies, but it also requires us to be thoughtful about how we reinvest in our existing assets and programs. This all must be accomplished with a commitment to financial stewardship, ensuring that we maintain a balanced, that we maintain balance and that we can adapt to changes and circumstances, which is certainly something that I think was evident over the course of the last year. And finally, we look to other priorities and focus areas that have been established through the One Sioux Falls Framework. To further set that stage in terms of scaling for growth, we gave you a few statistics, which I think somewhat illuminates what we see here and what our community has in terms of growth. I think the first one kind of stands out to me in the fact that we have added the equivalent of two cities the size of Brookings to our borders over the last 10 years, and we expect that we will do so again at least as much over the next 10 years. It's pretty, to think about that in terms of the scope of the city's services that we have to provide, I think is enlightening. The second one I would point out is the number of acres, 1,300 acres of land on average platted in a given year, equivalent to adding two square miles to our city, but 1,700 football fields. That's the expansive nature of the growth that we're experiencing here in Sioux Falls at the present time. If we take a look at what our city looks like compared to Omaha, it's a good comparison. We all are aware of Omaha. We've visited there. We look at them as somewhat of a like city in the upper Midwest. But if you look at our growth projections or what's happened over the last 10 years relative to our two cities, you can see that our growth has been significantly more than what they have. And you may ask, why does this matter? Well, this provides context that as a city, we are growing at a disproportionately faster rate, and that comes with unique challenges. It also comes with increased responsibility for that growth and the level of services that our city has to provide, whether that be fire, police, street maintenance, or park services. In terms of our why, our connecting people with our community, in all aspects of considering our budget considerations have to be made to ensure that when we are providing services, that we maintain them and enhance them in light of the pressures that growth can have. And ultimately, we have a responsibility to ensure that the allocation of our budget resources align with our community's expectations and ensure that we continue to have rapid response times, solid and quality parks, safe and efficient streets, and reliable utilities for our residents. This includes prioritizing investments that we make through our budgeting process. A large part of that in our city is, our city budget is the people, our workforce, making sure we have a right-sized workforce that meets the needs of our community, that we invest in employee culture with solid core values, we invest in innovation, and we have a caliber of employees, a stability, experience, expertise that is embraced, that will ensure continuity of the excellence that our city has become known for. With growth comes challenges, so we focus on those challenge areas as well, such as the link, our recommitment to mental health. Our investments in the link help to ensure that we meet people where they are. We reinvest in infrastructure so that we have the foundation for economic growth and economic security in our community, and we invest in recreational amenities so we have a place in a community that people want to live and raise their families. As we look at the totality of the budget before you for 2022, the total amount of revenues that are projected are $659.6 million. Of that, 39% of the budget, less than 50% of the total budget, is comprised of taxes, the first, second, and third penny sales taxes, as well as the property taxes and so forth. We do remain conservative in our projections, but as I will speak to here in a few minutes, we have changed our projections for 2021 as our baseline year from which this budget was built, to encapsulate some of the growth that we are seeing and experiencing here in the current year. If we look at the total budget in terms of expenditures, the total budget is $654.2 million, almost evenly split between operating and capital of about $270 million apiece, as well as approximately $105 million that's related to internal service funds. And I'm going to highlight each of those areas here over the next several slides. The city's financial strength is no coincidence. The city pays close attention to maintaining balance and ensuring a commitment to service while investing in today for a better tomorrow. While the city budget includes both operating and capital expenditures, ultimately, the two are complementary and mutually dependent. As we grow and build, we must continue to recognize the impact on operations. The way we build roads impacts how parks takes care of those landscaping around those roads. The location of a fire station or a report-to-work station impacts the efficiency of our fire and police service delivery and the response times. As we scale for that growth, strategically, we are aligning our capital program to our operational needs and ensuring that is critical to ensure that we continue to deliver high-quality services for a growing and dynamic community. If we break down the entirety of the operating budget within the operating budget for 2022, you can see that 92% of our operating budget is directly committed to providing direct service, basic services to our residents and our community, and over 50% of our current budget relates to police, fire, streets, and park services. Less than 8% of our budget is actually dedicated to general administration and support services. On the capital side, you can see that the capital breakdown is heavily focused on utility infrastructure and highways and streets. In particular, in 2022, we will have a large investment in the expansion of the long-discussed wastewater treatment facility, which is nearly half of our total $273 million capital program that's been aligned out for next year. As we look at our internal service and trust funds, it's important to note that they play an important role in investing for today for a better tomorrow. Each fund that we have is planned, has a planned approach, receives payments from the departments on a cost-share basis to provide specific benefits and services. The city is committed to ensuring employee benefits. Insurance, technology, facilities, and fleet services are all adequately funded with appropriate balances to help support the scaling for growth that our departments are committed to in terms of their services. We've kind of split them into two categories here to discuss. The first ones are planned or what I would, are probably more significant or material changes related to those internal trust funds. The first is property and liability. So with that, our property insurance, liability insurance has increased over time as the market challenges in terms of being a harder market, so we do have an increase of about 9.9% or about $163,000 in 2022 to help support that, the funding for that. The other two areas where we've made, are making more significant investments in 2022 are the Technology Revolving Fund and the Centralized Facilities Fund. I'm going to talk about those a little bit more in detail when we talk about general fund impacts, but additional one-time investments as well as increased chargebacks are being accomplished through the 2022 budget in order to support the viability and the needs in technology and supporting our existing assets here at the city. The ones that are more inflationary in terms of their impact, fleet, which is up about 4.2% or about $563,000, and that just happens to relate to the model for the fleet fund, ensuring that we have adequate maintenance replacement for our key fleet assets. And then on terms of the health benefits, workers' compensation, there was very minimal changes to those two areas. We were very fortunate, so less than 2% increases for both of those funds overall in terms of modeling out the impacts for those funds. They've been in a good, solid position and not going to experience a significant or material change next year. The general fund service is our primary operating account for the city, so it's the one that the residents probably see the most impact from in terms of where all of the city's services are generally paid for, whether that be for fire and police services or it's for filling potholes or clearing snow. About 80% of our general fund budget is comprised of taxes, so the first penny sales tax, as well as the property taxes, are both deposited into our general fund, as well as we run through various other pass-through taxes like our lodging taxes and bid, as well as the TIFs. It's important to point out here that property taxes are specifically dedicated to operations and services to residents every day in our community, including the things I talked about, snow removal and so forth. They are not dedicated to capital projects through our sales and use tax fund. If you want to take a look at some of our major revenue impacts that we have in our next budget, just to highlight a few, and I'll start with the sales tax. So overall, sales tax in the budget, we're projecting at $75.5 million. That's an increase of about $6.4 million or 9.2% over what we budgeted in 2020. While we still are projecting a 4% increase in the out-years, including 2022, 2023, as part of our general fund model, our baseline year, we have increased to a 10% expectation in terms of sales taxes. And I do believe that continues to be a conservative outlook for this year. We are seeing fairly significant growth this year, coming off a year where we had just a slight negative growth overall. But we do remain fairly conservative, we do remain conservative at that 4%, which is consistent with what our typical annual growth has been over the last several years. As far as property taxes, so we are budgeting property taxes at $73.9 million. That's a $3.1 million increase over 2020 or about 4.3%. This is comprised of 3%, 3.1% is based on growth of property taxes, just from natural growth in the community, and then the inflationary adjustment is just 1.2%. So for those of you who are, hear my monthly financial presentations, you're aware that we have inflationary growth that's, that's going more significant in the current year, but we run about two years behind in terms of property taxes. So it takes about two years before that inflationary calculation actually impacts our budget, and so we have to carry that through those inflationary pressures that the city has, just like anybody who, whether it's personal inflationary pressures that people have in their personal budgets or whether they have them for their businesses. The last one that we've been talking a lot about, both in the press and media, as well as in our monthly financial presentations, is the significant increase in our construction values as we've seen them for this year. So we've made some adjustments within our budget in terms of plating fees as well. So with building permits, we're expecting licenses and permits to be up $3 million or about a half-million dollar increase. That's 20% over the 2021 budget. On the other areas, much smaller areas, but bank franchise taxes, as you noted in our monthly financials, were consistently over the last three years over our budgeted expectations, so we have added $500,000 to that line item. It's about a 50% increase in our expectations to be more consistent with those prior years. And then as far as grants from state and local federal sources that are included in the budget, we have about $9.5 million, which is about a $3 million increase in budgeted use of grants and resources in the next budget that we're currently aware of. The general fund includes about $199 million in proposed expenditures, and you can see from this graphic here, public safety and health accounts for almost 50% of the budget, highways and streets accounts for another 15% in totality. If we look at the overall increase of the budget, it's approximately $13.7 million for the general fund specifically. Careful consideration of every department's needs were considered in putting together the 2022 budget, framed with a shared vision, obviously, for the One Sioux Falls Framework. I'm going to provide a high-level overview of what some of these changes are, but the departments, as they do their presentations as they follow today and for the rest of the month, will provide context to the changes from the vantage point of scaling for growth, connecting with people, connecting people with community, and investing in today for a better tomorrow. As we look at this, this graphic essentially breaks down the $13.7 million increase in the general fund and what, where those allocations essentially come from. The $13.7 million represents about a 7.4% increase overall for the general fund. Approximately $3 million of that is grant-funded, so if you were to deduct that out, the increase for the general fund is more about 5.8% in totality. If you look at the first two sections there, the blue section and the orange section, which totals approximately $5.8 million, this is related to wages and benefits. It's about a 40%, it represents about 40% of the increase in the general fund. $3.6 million of that is related to normal wage and benefit increases for existing personnel. The orange portion that you see there, the $2.1 million, that's related to new personnel and part-time wage adjustments. So $1.3 million is related to new FTE requests that are dedicated from the general fund or paid from the general fund, and about $800,000 is related to increasing part-time wages, specifically in the Parks and Recreation Departments and the Linebury Departments after having done a comprehensive survey of our current part-time wages. And we're all aware of some of the demands that are happening out there in the, in the local market in terms of demands for making sure we have part-time wages overall. As far as the other $7.9 million increase, $1.5 million is related to investments in centralized facilities. So this includes a $1 million one-time transfer from the general fund that's budgeted into 2022. It also includes $500,000 in increased chargebacks to the departments based on the projected needs for investing in our assets here over the next several years. For innovation and technology, it is also approximately a $1.5 million increase. Of this amount, about $500,000 relates to the fact that we removed the sales use transfer to the technology fund for equipment purchases and instead are funding that entirely out of the Technology Revolving Loan Fund, which creates additional chargebacks to the departments as they kind of roll through the system here. It includes another half-million dollars or so of a one-time transfer for some specific digital investments for the city, as well as a small increase in professional services needed to roll out some of those critical pieces of digital infrastructure that are necessary to keep our, our city on the digital spectrum. We have $1.4 million for health. This is actually offset with about $2.2 million in new grants that are received through ARPA and other sources. These are dedicated grants to the Health Department. We have an $800,000 increase for parks maintenance. $600,000 of this is related to the band shell, of which we expect half of it to be paid for with contributions. And then about $200,000 for additional investments for maintenance of aquatics, specifically filtering systems and filters for the Aquatic Center. We have a $700,000 increase for transit and housing, including an increase of $400,000 from the general fund specific to housing purposes, $300,000 specific to transit. There's a half-million dollar increase in what we would say partnership and service contracts, so $300,000 of this is our commitment to Metro Communications in order for them to maintain adequate staffing and technology levels. For their organization, we pay 75% of their budget outside of the fees that they collect. It includes a $100,000 increase to the Ford Sioux Falls from $400,000 to $500,000 annually in their next five-year program, and it includes about $100,000 to increase victim support and advocacy services, in particular to the children's in here in Sioux Falls, based on our commitments to achieving two days of payment, or paying for the first two days of services for the residents of Sioux Falls that happen to be utilized the children's care services. And then finally, a $300,000 increase in fleet service, which is just related to our fleet service fund. Our budgeted use of reserves for next year is $4.7 million. You can see that's down from our 2021 budget, excuse me, my 2022 budget. I'm probably saying the wrong numbers here through this entire presentation. I think I might be in the wrong year, so you'll have to pardon me on that. 2022's budget is, has a $4.7 million use of reserves, but as you're aware, we usually turn back 2% to 3% of our budget, and so oftentimes, even though we budget for use of reserves, we don't necessarily use reserves as part of our budget, but it is part of our budgeting process. And that is fairly consistent with the normal amount that we would budget from reserves. As we look, as we take a long-term approach to forecasting, most important is modeling out the general fund reserve in the out-years based on the anticipated revenues and operational needs for us in our, as a growing community. And this chart shows the projected general fund revenue over the next several years. The amount of the reserve to budget in this particular year is directly taken from this long-term outlook, so we determine how much we can budget for reserve based on when we feel, and we project that we're going to hit that 25% policy threshold. As far as the sales and use tax or the second penny investments, just a high-level overview of that, you'll be hearing a lot more about these particular projects as the departmental presentations come forward. But this, this year's capital program continues to emphasize investments in roads, but also balances with other key areas. Highways and streets is receiving the largest portion and the largest increase of the five-year capital program in general, but the program also recognizes having a livable community is key to workforce attraction and development efforts, and so there's, continues to be significant investments with our Parks and Recreation and cultural amenities as well. As an administration, we continue to be committed to maintaining a balanced and disciplined approach to debt, working to continue to minimize our debt to less than 30% of the available funds that are, the available revenues within the sales and use tax fund. This ensures that we continue to meet our cash investment needs for regular infrastructure while also using debt in a principled way for those long-lasting life investments that will benefit not just current users, but future users as well. So the graph above shows the second penny sales tax revenues in gray and blue bars. The orange line that you see with the dash marks, marks in each of the bar represents the current to proposed debt service coverage ratio for the city. The yellow line with the red dots presents the two-times debt service coverage policy that the city has as a result of its various bond indentures. And so you can see that for all years there, we're well below in terms of projections, in terms of where we would be in terms of that policy threshold. The bars that you see in blue are related to the current capital program, and that does include and incorporate the proposed quality-of-life bond that is been discussed that would be issued in 2023 and begin repayment in 2024. The capital program does anticipate for this quality-of-life bond issued. It looks ahead. We know that the city is going to have to make some fairly significant investments in our aquatics. As we looked ahead at, at some of what those investments would entail, obviously, more significant than the amount of cash that we may have in any given particular year to make such significant investments, and so we utilize bonding for those purposes, and that would put us about three to, three years out from the last bond, which we just did, which was the safety, the bond for the public safety training facility. This, the proceeds of this bond would be utilized to support replacement of several pools, as well as enhancements to several pools, as well as we're proposing to replace the, the clubhouse and the card barn as part of the Elmwood Golf Course, as part of this bonding, this bonding proposal as well. And though it doesn't, this, though this program does include that debt service in its projection, projected use of cash in the out-years, I would note that, as you can see, we continue to reduce the amount of debt that we are, we are devoting from the capital program for debt repayment. And in fact, there's actually $8 million less of debt service in this five-year capital program than there was in the last five-year capital program, primarily because the actions this council took to repay debt last year that put us in a better position overall from our, our debt service perspective. In closing, just make a couple of comments. We talked a lot in our past presentations about our capacity to plan, balance, and adapt, and I think looking back at the past year and as we continue to look forward, as we look at the impacts we had from the pandemic, we certainly were well-served by the financial responsibility that the city has taken care of over the last many decades. It's not a one-time strategy, but it's embedded into our philosophy as we continue to be tested over time and withstand the pressures of leaning too far one direction or another. I think we have been well-served by these principles in the past and put us in a position of growth coming out of a pandemic, to the extent that other communities, I think, would, would very much be envious of. The second item to highlight here is that we've had discussions about one-time funding opportunities. The council has had a work session on those one-time funding opportunities and, and passed a resolution in support of, of some project priorities. I do want to highlight the fact that we will be working with you to bring some of those forward in August of this year, over the course of several weeks, as well as working with you to amend this current budget with some of those one-time funding opportunities. So there are some timing aspects for that. I would expect several of those would come forward in August as it relates to supplementing the 2021 budget, and then we will request some motions to amend the 2022 budget, which currently does not account for some of those one-time expenditures in it. Lastly, I, I leave with this statement on vision, values, and a commitment to service. As you'll see in the forthcoming presentations, you will see a lot less focus on numbers. In particular, I feel like we've worked very hard to create a budget book that hopefully can answer as many questions as easily, can, can easily, you can see the impacts of what the, the changes to each of the individual department budgets are, and be able to, to develop questions that you might have as a result of that. So we'll be using this, these, these budget hearings to discuss more in line with our long-term visions, plans, and how those align with some of the, the budget impacts that you see coming forward to you in 2022. With that, I am going to hand over the mic to Bill, who will talk about Personnel Services. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. Bill O'Toole from Human Resources. Before I get started as well and get into the Personnel Services information, I do want to thank Amber Gibson from Finance and Sean's team for helping us put this information together, as well as Angie Youth, the our Total Compensation Manager, who does a lot of information gathering every year as we get ready for this. And I'm going to dive right in, and we're going to start talking about growth in the city of Sioux Falls. You heard Director Pritchett talk about that. I've shared this slide in years past. There's actually a lot to kind of unpack here, and what I'd like to do is kind of break this down and talk more specifically about growth issues related to the population, growth issues related to employees, and talk a little bit about future going forward as well. But as you look at this, obviously, the blue bar is going back to 1990 all the way through 2022. 2022. You can see the population growth. Along the bottom is the total number of city employees over that same period of time. And then we floated in a line chart that represents the number of city employees per 10,000 population. And just real quickly, there's a 32-year period that's up on this chart. We've, in essence, doubled our population over this period of time. We've grew our FTE count by 490 employees, but we have reduced the number of employees per 10,000 population from 83 to 66. So let's, let's start unpacking this a little bit. I can do it fairly quickly, and I would like to look at it in increments of 10 years, because I think that's informative and fairly significant periods of time. And let's start by looking at the growth between 1990 and 2000. Population growth was 24%. We added 24,322 people to the population. Over the next 10 years, from 2000 to 2010, we had a 23% growth and added 28,730 to the population. And then in 2010 to 2020, we had a 27% growth, adding just under 42,000. So how did that correlate to employee growth over those incremental time periods? Obviously, we grew, but we grow at, we grew at different rates. Again, if we look at the last 30 years, we grew 443 employees, which averaged about 14.76 per year over, over 30 years. So if we look at those same 10-year periods from, from the perspective of employee growth, we added 103 from 1990 to 2000, and that was a 12% growth. If you remember from the prior chart, population grew 24%. So we lost a little ground on the employees per 10,000 from 83 to 75. 2000, a little bit different story, the employee growth. We added 194 employees, which was 20% growth, 21% growth, excuse me. Population grew 23%, so relatively flat during that period of, 10-year period of time. We did lose one from 75 to 74. And then in 2010 to 2020, the employees, we, we grew 146 employees, which was 13%, but population grew at 27%. So again, we're starting to create this, this spread, if you will, and the reduction of the employee per 10,000 population. So if we kind of look at this, again, we pull up the same chart. I've simply added a little more information here. And again, talking about the growth, and if we just talk about the 30-year period of time from 1990 to 2020, where we had 1,281 city employees, that was a 92% growth in population and a 53% growth in employees over that 30-year period. And again, we decreased the number of FTEs per 10,000 population from the high of 83 down to 65, which represents a 20% decrease in the number of employees per 10,000 population over that 30-year period of time. Our average annual population increase was 3,098, and again, the average annual FTE growth over that period was 15. So I wanted to take some of that information, project that out, and make some assumptions about future growth based on the past. Again, it's just an indicator. So if we assume a similar growth period over the next 30 years and get to a population of 300,000 by the year 2050, and if we wanted to maintain that level, 66 per 10,000 population, we would need to have 2,000 city employees at that time, or adding 719 over the next 30 years. And I'm backwards math here. If you take that on average then each year, that would equate to adding 24 FTEs per year with those assumptions. Again, I always like to show this chart, but always provide a disclaimer that we don't do a deep dive when we compare ourselves to some of the other cities across the region. It really is just a macro look. We don't say which city's bright, which service is. We just do it kind of a gut check, if you will. And our position hasn't changed here. We're, we're kind of always on the lower end of the spectrum when we make the comparison. Getting into the city employees, I did want to share with the council our compensation and benefit objectives for getting city employees and retaining those employees, and they're really straightforward. Obviously, we want to attract qualified applicants for employment in all categories of work that we offer. We want to retain experienced and qualified employees. We want to provide incentives to those employees to pursue career advancement, and we want to do that all within reasonable economic parameters, including the council's 25% reserve in the general fund. Sharing some statistics, again, these should look fairly familiar, and frankly, we were quite surprised at the numbers that they weren't a little more, bit of a cliff between 2019 and 2020 with COVID. But here you're seeing the number of applications since 2015 all the way through 2020, our, our vacancies, and then the average number of applications. So gives you kind of a barometer of the interest in our success in getting people to apply for the positions here at the city of Sioux Falls. And you see last year, we had 85 vacancies and an average number of applications of 32 for each of those vacancies. On the, on the backside, again, you're seeing data from 2011 all the way through 2020, then looks at our turnover rate, both without retirements and with retirements. So the blue bar actually represents your, your total turnover rate at the city going back all the way to 2011. You can see there's a little blip there in 2014. That's when we made some pension changes, pain, changes, and people kind of backed up retirement. So we saw a little bit of a spike in terms of the turnover rate. But other than that, fairly steady, obviously not alarming, 6.8% last year, and it was 4.5% without retirements. So getting into some of the details with respect to the cost of what it takes for all the city employees delivering the programs and essential services in the, in the city of Sioux Falls. Obviously, the total budget of 654.2 million dollars. Personnel costs represent 24% of the total budget, which is 157.9 million, and at least 496.4 million remaining in the budget. And I would just remind the council that we have about 85% of our employees in the general fund, about 1133, and 195 in the enterprise funds for the total 1328, if these positions are approved in the budget. So we like to drill this down a little bit, be a little more informative as it relates to where the majority of our city employees are in the general fund. Like I said, about 85% of them are there. The 2022 general fund budget is 199.3 million. And here you can see the personnel costs represent 66% of the general fund budget. It's about 130.7 million, represents an increase of about 5.8 million over last year. The increase is attributed to new employees at 1.3 million, increase in part-time at 800,000. Overall wages, 3.2 million, and benefits at .5 million for the, for the 5.8 overall increase. So again, continuing to drill that down even further, the total personnel services of 130.7 million. You can see there are four segments of the pie that, that comprise that, and the biggest piece, obviously, is wages and salaries, as you would expect. That's 94.1 million or a 5.2% increase. The health and dental, 2.1% increase is 15.8 million dollars or 12%. Pension is 15.4 million. The OASI, which is Social Security, Medicare, and workers' compensation, at 4% is, is an increase of 4.7% or 5.4 million dollars for a total of 130.7 million dollars. And again, as we always, I always like to share, you know, how does this look in terms of the percent of personnel costs in the general fund over time? And it fluctuates, but very little. So nothing out of line with respect to prior year's comparison of how much of the general fund is, is made up of those personnel costs. Obviously, another piece beyond that of full-time employees, we do have part-time employees. And what I would share with you is that of the 2022 total budget, 8% of that, or 8.6 million, is in part-time wages, whereas 95.1 is in full-time wages. And you can see here, the, here's the part-time equivalent positions that we have. So we have 242 part-time equivalents, with parks and recreation making the vast majority of those city employees, or part-time city employees. And as this council knows, we've established a, a kind of a revised strategy, how, how we come at and how we're targeting for part-time employees. They, they serve an important function in this city of Sioux Falls, and I really need to give credit to a couple of people. Jane Hannisted from Human Resources and Amber Gibson took on this project. It's something we've been talking about for a number of years, but they finally came forward with what we believe is an excellent kind of new approach in how we handle part-time employees and categorizing their roles into respective EEO categories, and then being able to compare those, that work that's being performed to similar to that of the full-time employees and coming up with a methodology that gets to a wage that's, that's more competitive and allows us to become better at attracting those folks and getting the experience for the responsibilities that, that they're performing. We've committed to improving that over time. There was a supplement earlier this year in the amount of 250,000 that this council supported. Thank you for that. That was very helpful in allowing the Parks Department to do a better job to get those folks. But in the 2022 budget, we're also requesting an additional 350,000 for part-time wages for the other side of the equation in park operations, as you heard Director Pritchett talk about, and as well as the library as well. And also want to talk briefly about the commitments to the employees, the full-time employees' wages. As most of you know, all union contracts have been successfully negotiated through 2023. The FOP Lodge Number One labor contract was, was negotiated and approved pre-COVID. That one's all completed. We secured contracts for the other two bargaining units as well. How are those included wage openers, because we did those post-COVID? I'm here to inform you that, that, that was wage opener discussions are completed. Negotiations went exceptionally well, and in fact, will be in front of the city council probably in the next few weeks with those labor contracts, asking for your approval moving forward so that we can secure and kind of close those up through 2023. You heard Director Pritchett talk about, and we talked about, the employee growth and the population growth. We are a growing city. With that, obviously, we need to have employees being added to the budget so that we are keeping up with that growth and continue delivering those essential services. You can see here, I'm not going to go through each one of these. We've provided a handout that provides a summary explanation of each of these respective positions. There are 23 requested for 2022 at a total cost of 1.83, a million 837, 439. Of that amount, it breaks out into the general fund, a million 322,000 in the general fund and the enterprise fund, 515,340. From the Human Resources budget, specifically, we've got 16 FTEs in Human Resources, a 2.1 million-dollar budget. Probably the most significant increase that, that we're looking at, that we're seeing for, for next year is in the full-time wages and benefits area, about 251,000 dollars. Obviously, that, that's going to account for cost, the cost of living adjustments, any steps, some departmental retirements, and allocation of, of adjustments being made for some changes we made earlier this year. Two things that I want to highlight in that regard, when I refer to retirements, it's not me, Reed Holson from our office, who's a talent manager, is going to be retiring in January. We are preparing for that retirement. There's some costs that, that go with that as well. But another big move that we made is we moved one employee that was involved or funded through internal service funds, targeted it towards a talent acquisition side on Jane's team to assist us in better meeting the needs, hiring needs throughout the city of Sioux Falls. And with that, just required some reallocation, so that's why that number was up a little bit higher. And again, that was probably the, the most significant impact for our organization. We think this budget is really good. Hopefully, the information that I've shared helps you better understand. I think the trend going forward is more in the neighborhood of 20 to 24 employees each year. If we're going to assume that, that growth is going to occur the way we've been experiencing it. We are a growing city. It is our employees that are the ones delivering the programs and services, providing the public safety. And we think this request helps take care of our existing employees and does allow us to keep up with a, a growing committee. We appreciate your support and look forward to questions later. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Just for the councils, we've, I talked to Sean about how we're going to structure this, and I've asked that we hold all our questions to the end of presentations, because in the past three years, what happened is I asked so many questions upfront that the final presenter gets cut way short, and that's probably not appropriate. So I'm going to ask them to go right on through all the presentations, and we can hold our questions to the end. Thank you.
I struggle, if I can, Mr. Chair, I struggle with that. I barely remember what I ate for breakfast, let alone the questions from the previous, from the previous folks, that sometimes those answers spark additional questions. For me personally, I would love to be able to ask those questions and be respectful of time. If we know how mu, how much time is each presentation, and that we know if the presentation's 15 minutes, we're going to do 10 minutes for questions, that's just my mentality for it. Like I said, I'm aging and my, my mind is going.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I echo Counselor Erickson's comment. Three hours and then questions is, is further than I can go down where we need to go. And the problem is, I'm the one, or the council are the ones that get cut short then in the presentation. If we have to, we can carry over. A department would make more sense than, than doing that part of it. I apologize that we didn't have this discussion in advance, but i, if we're going to get to the end and then we get squeezed for the amount of time, it's easier when the, the department heads are here now and it's fresh than it is to try to bring them back with questions as we get squeezed at the end of the amount of time.
Well, if, if, if counselors think they can't remember their questions to the end, then I'll allow them to go ahead. But please, please, please be considerate of everybody's time, because we have a lot to go through in the next month. So if you have a question, go ahead, get it out there. Otherwise, I'm going to ask to hold them to the end. Council Breaky?
I've got a question. And again, I, I, I agree. I do like the idea of limiting our questions, you know, per, you know, per presentation and keeping on track, but it, it is hard to, I think for the public to follow it as well, when the presentations are all given and then the questions are all given at the end. So the question that I have for Mr. O'Toole, Director O'Toole, is, you know, I, I appreciated your presentation, you know, about the, the per capita number. I think that that's extremely relevant in these discussions, and I do want to add that when I came back to the city after being gone, you know, for 14 years, I was shocked at how few employees that we actually had. And I, I, because as I, I visited with each of the directors when I was running for office, and I, I was trying to figure out how that could possibly be, that they could have held the employee countdown when the population was doing what it was doing. And I came to the conclusion, after talking to all the directors, that it was because of technology, that really we were able to limit our growth because of the, you know, because we are leaders in technology, we're innovative, and we move forward. So, so kudos to that. So I would, you know, my question then is, I think we need to be very careful about your 24 number, because as technology improves, it really is a year-to-year thing, and I don't know that you can really attach an average to it, because depending on, I mean, it's good for discussion purposes, but I think, you know, we need to be very careful about saying it's okay to add about 24 employees per year, because as technology continues to improve, we have to be, I think, ever vigilant of, you know, leading and using that in order to, you know, try not to grow, which is what we've done successfully in the past. And I guess the question then is, would you agree with that assumption?
Yeah, and I think we've talked about that in, in years past, that the, the reason that trend line that we see in the number of employees per 10,000 population, I think you're spot on with what you're talking about, that through kind of economies of scale, scaling for growth, advances in technology, all of that helped contribute to us going in that way. And I wouldn't say we were doing it wrong, and that wasn't, that wasn't the intended message. But I do think as you, as you see what's happened there, kind of a downward trend in 10 years, kind of a flattening for 10 years, downward trend for 10 years, and now we're kind of in that flattening mode again. I think these are some assumptions and kind of bench of bench park point of references that we're making in this regard and projecting going forward. I think it's very possible, because we don't know what the next technology will be that might help us bring that number down. But to think that that would go down another 20% over the next 30 years like it did the previous, I think probably, I don't know that that is even feasible. I ran some of those numbers, and you'd be quickly into the point of, just, it didn't seem to work at all. But I think you're right, I'm not trying to suggest this is, this is the magic formula. It's simply some data to look at to say, how are we doing in terms of keeping up with the growth? I think it's just contextual.
Okay, and I would just, I would also add, I think in keeping with that, that way of thinking, I mean, I'm looking at the number of employees that we're adding, and I'm looking at what the departments are. And again, those are services that are physical related services. The vast majority of the employees that were, new employees that are being asked for are in public works, you know, you know, streets, water, I mean, things that still require a human being to do them. Police still require a human being to do them. And so I think, you know, what the data or the study that you do does support the recommendations that you're making, and I appreciate it, but I just, I just wanted to be ever, you know, cognizant of the future, you know, and just this kind of overall assumption that it's okay if we add about that every year, because I think every year we have to look at it carefully. And I don't think you were suggesting that, but I just wanted to raise that point in that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just have one quick question. Director, talk to me a little bit about how retention has been impacted since hiring a chief cultural officer. What does that look like the last year and budget year? And really, the impact of that particular position?
This isn't meant to show any direct correlation, but this is the data as it relates to our turnover all the way back to 2011. You know, a 6.8% turnover rate last year, 8.4% and then 7.2. I think those are reasonable numbers. We're also obviously very well aware of what's coming up in terms of retirements. We're ready for that. We don't think we're necessarily seeing anything we're not prepared to address. But I don't have any direct data to say, because of this, X happened, Counselor. And I think that's kind of the nature of your question, so.
Yeah, really just kind of wondering what the impact of that particular, you know, position was. I know it came with a little controversy as it was being submitted and put through that, just kind of having an idea of really the impact of that particular role that, and not to single out any role, because we've got a list of 24 of them, but that one maybe had more scrutiny than others.
It did, and it would obviously have relevance on many different areas, including leadership development, our employee engagement scores, leadership development, all of those sorts of things, which I do believe have been a positive role. I mean, I'm very familiar with the individual and have a lot, a great deal of respect for the work that she does. She used to come from Human Resources, so.
Right.
But I don't have any direct data to answer your question.
Maybe, maybe that's something, I guess I don't know where we'll ask that, but we'll look for maybe some additional detail on that particular one. Thank you.
Counselor Star.
Yes, thank you, Director O'Toole. One of the things we talk about every year is the diversity or lack thereof in our workforce. You know, I was surprised by Chief Burns' comments on his way out explaining and looking at his thing. And one in the Argus Leader article, he talked about, the quote was, while he's largely happy with what he's done, he's also blunt about the fact that he wishes that he had made more progress on one of his biggest goals, increasing the diversity of the, or increasing the department's diversity. I guess from your point of view, from your department, does that lead need to come from Human Resources? Does it need to come from the individual directors? Do we need more emphasis from us as a council that we want to increase the diversity of our workforce? We've had this conversation, you know, in the same spot over the last couple of years. But finally, if it's a priority, it's got to reflect in the budget. And it doesn't reflect in the budget that there is a emphasis on diversifying our workforce. Or am I missing that?
Well, I don't, we have a dollar number that we get attacked just for that purpose. That's all, that's obviously part of our recruitment and retention strategy overall. And I always like to address that a little bit in respect that you always hope you can, you can do better and that you mirror your population. That's, that's the goal, okay? And I have, the most important thing is first is to understand your data, and do you know where your disparities exist? And the answer to that is, we do know where those disparities exist. We produce an annual affirmative action plan that tells us kind of where we are in relation to the available market. And I don't want to bore you with the details, but when it comes to the overall representation with respect to minorities, our representation, our representation is 5.1%, whereas the market availability is 6.6%. Of course, we'd like to see that higher. When it comes to females in the workforce, their available marketability is at 48.4, and we're at 25.7. And we know where those things are, and I understand the nature of your question, Counselor. I would just say that we do develop goals, we have that in mind, we know which EEO categories where we are short, but do we hit the mark every year? But that is, that is a goal, is to, is to make improvements and try to be more representative of your community. But I, I'm not going to stand here and say I have a specific dollar amount tied to it as part of the recruitment budget.
All right, and the other, just to get to a quick, there's a considerable increase in the budget for the PCON program. At some point, can you provide to our budget analyst or something, the results and where we see that we're getting the results for that to add that much of an increase into the process?
Yes, we can provide that information. And yes, you're right, I believe there's about a $15,000 increase in the professional services side of the equation, which goes to the software that we use to obtain that information for employees. But yes, we can follow up.
Counselor Selberg?
Real quick question, just on the subject that's already been touched on. So the city employees per population, that number that we have, that's something you're comfortable with and that's comparable to other communities of our size and we're good?
Yes, absolutely. And I guess my point more than anything else is, at least for the foreseeable future, I see that as kind of a plateau period, that that's probably where we're going to be for a while. But I am comfortable with the 66 for 10,000 population.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Naiton?
Real quick, Director, difficulty in hiring part-time staff, is that persisting and creating impacts on city services? And how do you fix it?
Want to answer it? The answer is, that has been a challenge for, I think, virtually every employer throughout Sioux Falls and the region. I think the strategies we followed with the council's support have helped us immensely. Are we done? We're not done. That's why we're asking for even more dollars to go out. So we are competitive in getting that segment. As we said before, about 8% of our overall wages is for that part-time arena. They're an important workforce piece for us, particularly in parks and recreation, they're the face a lot of times. So we think our strategy, that what we've come up with to be more competitive in that arena year after year is going to help us. Has it solved everything? Can I sit here and say everything? No, but it's, there's a number of factors beyond pay that I think we've all are looking at as employers, and we're all competing for that pool. But we certainly think that this was a major step in the right direction, and I'd like to thank the council for their support when we asked for that supplement last year as well.
Okay, very good. And I don't think I see it in the numbers, but I don't, you don't see it in pressures in the full-time? I don't see retention numbers that seem to be increasing or difficulty hiring, or is there things going on?
Well, I'm not going to say there's not challenges, but there's not challenges that I'm alarmed with, if that's fair.
Thank you. Move on to the next presentation. IT and Communications?
Good afternoon, councilors. Mike Grigsby, Director of Innovation and Technology. This time last year, I was still getting used to the city and still getting used to my team. We have had significant wins and a lot of accomplishments over the past year. COVID presented us with a lot of challenges, one of them in the way of technology and communication through what we've called collaboration, virtual meetings and so forth. So to see that, we've taken the last year and really laid a foundation for where we want to go over the next three or five years. And I think as we look into 2022, we're going to continue that trend and lay some foundational components, things that we're going to be able to springboard off of into the subsequent years. So innovation and technology comprises several different divisions. One is the information and technology, or information technology division. Inside that, you have IT support, IT infrastructure, and IT systems. Additionally, you have civic analytics will be represented under that division. And then in, under communications, you have both the communications and marketing as well as digital services. The Office of Innovation is also included under information technology. What's been interesting is to try to find the common thread that pulls those divisions together. And as I've talked with my team, I've talked with a lot of the other directors of the departments, we have put a focus in on data. Data is the thing, is the thread that binds all of the departments together. And when we talk about that, we have a focus on creating, publishing, managing, curating, securing, transporting, accessing, and storing data. Now, all of those things are represented within the divisions in their day-to-day activities. And as we start to look forward, one of the things that we're going to put a focus in around with regard to an objective is a digital-first, a mobile-first, and a cloud-first approach. We saw this again last year with COVID, as we saw distributed work environments, a lot of people being displaced from their normal workplaces. Technology was by and large the glue that held that all together and was allowed the work to continue. So as we begin to put our efforts together, again, we're going to look digital first, we're going to look at mobility, being able to utilize solutions that are outside of a, what we would consider to be a traditional or historic office environment, and then mobile first. We saw a lot of information collected last year with regard to the number of residents that are accessing city services on mobile devices, and we need to match up with that demand. And so we're going to, again, lay the foundation for that over time. Through information technology, we're going to make the investments in, through our revolving technology fund. I, for one, am grateful for this fund to exist in the city. This is the first city that I've seen that has utilized that as a resource. And what that does is it allows us to manage our investment in technology over a protracted period of time. For the year of 2022, the projects, the significant projects that we are going to be looking at is, we're going to take this through the lens of service, communication, and safeguarding. Safeguarding will play a significant part here in just a moment as I explain. The first portion is service, and right now, we are utilizing a service management tool that we will have significant upgrade. That is a ticketing management system. The investment in that will give us a lot of different capabilities with a focus in on operational efficiencies. Managing all of the requests and the demands that are coming in is significant, not only to the team, but also to the customer experience, both internally and externally. So we will make a significant investment into the service desk upgrade. Additionally, we will be looking at a Microsoft Office upgrade, so Office 365. I know this is a common term, common solution that a lot of organizations have done. City of Sioux Falls will be entering into that over the course of the next year. And one of that is really, again, to take advantage of the accessibility capabilities within Office 365, as well as security and improved collaboration. The ability to, to work collaboratively across multiple departments, multiple teams, is something that we have, that we're in desperate need of, and we need to, again, make the investments there. The other, another technology investment is going to be in our unified communications. What we would traditionally consider to be a desktop phone has not been hardwired or has not fallen under that traditional technology for several years. It's been what they call voice-over IP, so it's connected through our servers, and that's how we're getting our voice communications. Last year, as we implemented WebEx, this was a virtual environment, virtual collaboration environment. That investment, we want to capitalize on and extend further, and we're going to be making the investment into a, replacing our entire desktop phone system and our, what we consider to be our voice-over IP system. That collaboration and the integration between those two will give us more capabilities. Largely, it will allow people to work remotely. The ability to answer an office phone from a mobile device is capabilities that we're going to have. That capability will give us faster response times and allow us to communicate in a much better way. Lastly, as I talked about safeguarding, cybersecurity is on the, you know, at top of everyone's list. We had an incident in the state last, yesterday. Again, it hits home, and we understand the need to provide that type of security, provide that layer of protection. Last year, we made some investment into our cybersecurity, part of a three-phased approach. This year, for 2022, excuse me, we're going to be looking at an additional layer to that cybersecurity. One of the things that we have to do and we need to focus in on is, we need to look for solutions that are force multipliers. As we saw with the, with the personnel, we have several instances where we have a single point of failure, just one individual providing a very unique or specialized service, and we need to find technology solutions around that that extend their capability. So with our security investment, we'll be making changes that will allow us to be more responsive and to detect those in a much, much faster and much, much more resilient Looking at communications, the communications team right now is comprised of about 21 full-time employees, and they have a budget of about $2.7 million. And one of the significant projects that we're going to be looking at there is going to be the website redesign. This is important, not only for internal functionality within the organization, but this is kind of the front door, if you will, for how the residents interact with the city. Some of those capabilities that we're going to do will provide new features, new ways to access city services. Internally, we're going to find a lot of operational efficiencies. The way that the platform is currently set up is, it's unwieldy and it causes a lot of unnecessary operational delays or workflow delays. And what, with the new platform, we're going to be able to kind of push out, if you will, the content generation and the content management to a lot of the different departments to be able to have, be more responsive and have quicker, quicker updates to the website. That will be a multi-phase approach. We'll be looking over the course of 2022 to get the platform in place and then follow that up with additional features and capabilities in the subsequent years. Lastly, I'll talk about our FTE requests and our vision as far as looking forward. So we've requested two additional FTEs. One is a desktop administrator within information technology, and the second is the communication production specialist in communication and marketing. Both of those positions will be focused in on operational efficiencies. As I mentioned, we're talking, we already have a ticketing system, we already have requests and demands coming in. These two positions, both on the communication side and the information technology side, will provide a level of quality control, quality assurance, as well as enhancing the user experience and the user response. Right now, we have that focus, or those tasks are spread across a number of individuals. By dedicating one individual to look at that, both from a quality control management as well as the response time, we'll be able to enhance and improve the customer experience internally as well as externally. And then finally, to take a look at the vision ahead, we have made a request for additional funds in professional services so that we can begin to lay, begin to get our arms around, I should say, the data that we have within the city. What is indicative of our city and certainly most organizations out there is that over the years, as technology systems have been implemented, they have not been implemented in an integrated fashion. What that means is that the data remains in silos and makes it very, very challenging for disparate systems to communicate and collaborate with each other. We are missing opportunities to leverage data from one domain into another that can provide meaningful insights, additional decision-making, and faster decision-making. So we want to start to, start to get our data resources and our data storehouse into a standardized and normalized fashion. The production, the professional services will help us provide the strategy, look at the strategies that are needed for that. It will also help us point to those opportunities with regard to smart cities, smart city investment, smart city opportunities. What's interesting is smart city, like a lot of topics, is a, is a term that is very difficult to is very difficult to understand, and you can get multiple definitions on that. From my own personal understanding and my own personal definition is a smart city is one that is responsive and promotes citizen engagement, resident engagement. So we are looking at all of the opportunities, certainly with all the development that's going on over the next several years downtown and around the city. How do we capitalize on that? How do we pull in the data? And how do we make the investment into not only the data, the data outputs, but the collaboration there? And how do we capitalize on the digital transformation that is already upon the city? We know that that is going to be an accelerated timeline over the next several years, so we want to make sure that we are getting ahead of that as well as we can. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Talk a little bit about the phone system. Is that going to be something that's phased in or transitioned all at once? And then a follow-up to that is if employees are using cell phones, are these city, city cell phones, or will a cellphone allowance be given and you just load it like most of us just load our own on our personal phones?
I'll take your second question first.
Okay.
So we currently have a policy that, that outlines who can receive a stipend or a cellphone, a city, city-provided cellphone. So those policies will stay in place and will work around and work through that current policy. The capabilities will be implemented. We can consider it phased because we'll work through department by department. We will stop gaining insights and make sure that the deployment of that is very, very smooth. But the capabilities will allow more, I think it will open up the opportunity to allow more employees to access this remotely or from a mobile, but we'll work through the policy on that. It won't be just an assumption from the, from the start on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Neitzer?
Yeah, just to follow up, there's some good stuff I did here there because I can tell you, like in my organization, moving to Office 365 has definitely opened up a lot of possibilities where I can do a lot of things here, do a lot of things here, and it follows me around. And I don't even have to be connected to the VPN for a lot of it anymore, which is nice. And then as regards the phones, we moved to the voice-over IP many years ago, and so to the customer standpoint and to the outside user, it doesn't look or feel any different. You just still call a phone number. It's just that it rings here, it rings here, wherever my headset is. So that works really well. So that's all good. And as far as the continuity and single point of failure, that's important as well. That's something that, that we've done. We kind of call it the, the car accident scenario, which is what if this guy gets hit by a car, what do we do? And so we went through the whole organization and figured out, you know, where, where there's, this is the only guy that knows or gal that wrote the code, nobody else knows anything about it, and trying to make sure you have that continuity in place. And I'm sure that's all over the city. So, and you have institutional knowledge, it built up over decades, and then they retire, and then you're, you know, in deep trouble because it's all up here, and it was never put on paper, there was never cross-trained. So all good stuff. Thank you.
Counselor Kiley?
Thank you. I know it's a very small part of our budget, overall budget, but can you tell me how the cable franchise fee is established? I do note that there's not a change from 2021 to 2022. How is that established? Is that the cable franchise fee?
I don't have information on the franchise fee with regard to, to mine. I don't know that, how that's tied into information technology.
Okay, if you could just get back to me at that at a later time, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Other counselors? Counselor Neitzer?
Maybe one other thing, the communication specialist, so how does that fit in or assist in the team that's already in place? I mean, I don't know if you have like one who's kind of doing the social media piece and one who's over here doing, you know, formatting of ordinances and where does that piece?
So within the communications division, they also oversee the print production shop. Excuse me. So within the production shop, that individual will have what's called creative services team. So we have our communications and coordination and marketing coordinators, and then we have the creative services team. So that production services specialist is going to go on the creative services team to help manage the, the print shop, to help manage the, the work requests that are coming in. So it won't be a, it won't be a creative role, but it'll help manage all of the workflow that's coming into, to the division. Does that, does that answer the question?
Yeah, I guess I'm curious, just as somebody, you know, that doesn't, doesn't work full-time every day, what is it, production of just things like this? I mean, what, what is being all created?
So I don't have, I don't have the numbers in front of me with the number of requests that we have coming in on a weekly or monthly, but I can, I can get that information to you. This is, this will be a replacement of a position that had been, I guess, sunsetted or phased out from a few years ago. And getting that position back will just be, will allow those roles and those tasks to be offset from our current manager and our current supervisor. So it's a, it's a elevated position, elevated role with responsibility, and it'll just take off some of that from the current manager and the supervisor.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I'll ask one question, and I know I've driven down this road and past budget cycles. Tell me about the increase in the citywide adjustment to internal technology charges that departments have to pay.
Excuse me. So with the revolving technology fund, those, those fees are distributed across the departments. Those are the chargebacks. As we, this particular cycle, the $500,000 that goes back in from general fund into the revolving fund is there to help make sure that our revolving fund stays at a, at a certain level that, that we've identified internally through the finance team. So each one of those, you'll see the up, the charges or the increase in the rentals within the departments, and that's reflective of what's being charged back in the revolving tech fund.
Thank you. Counselor Neitzer?
Just to follow up on that, do you have a set cycle, three-year, five-year, something like that, that you want to keep revolving everybody's PCs so nobody gets too far out? Do you have a policy?
So we don't have a formal policy, and it's actually one that we, that I am asking our chief technology officer to implement. They have been on a five, excuse me, on a three-year cycle. We're looking to try to get that extended to a five-year cycle. It just helps us manage the investment, manage the, the funds a little bit better, the turnaround on that. I think we can manage that, I think we can manage it at the five-year level. I'd like to see that change.
Saying all that, thank you. We'll move right along. Public Works!
Good afternoon, City Council. Thanks for having us. I'll get set up here. Tamara, will you turn the red, the yellow light on when I hit 30 minutes? All right, well, thank you again for having us. We've got a lot of ground to cover today. Our Public Works Management Team is here, a number of our key staff. We're going to have a special thank you to our financial team, which includes the financial broader team, along with Heidi Plimpton and Sean Franken. One of the things that is important to shape the priorities for Public Works, since we do connect with the customers every day with water, sewer, and all the other, the transportation assets, is that they really do help shape our priorities, and we hope that that matches yours today as we come before you. The Public Works budget for 2022 is 328 million, and with your support, and I appreciate Counselor Breckie's comment, we do have 11 additional employees in this budget. Five are general funded and six are enterprise funded. Of the $328 million budget, 95 million of that is operations and 214 million is capital and 20 million is debt service. One of the things that we wanted to share with you is in early 2021, we, we took a fresh look at our organization. Our goal was to simplify the organization and also drive more collaboration. And so we used to see a number of linear operations across. We have since formed a transportation focus group that includes both streets and engineering. Our business operations team includes our fleet, utility billing, one contact, and inventory. Environmental Services has been expanded to bring landfill in, and that complements our watershed maintenance, our sustainability, household hazardous waste, and our environmental technicians. And then utilities are specific to power and light and water and wastewater. So we'll take you through. We also have a key box there that highlights the support that we get from the city attorney's office. We have two embedded attorneys that are critical as we carry out about 800 different agreements each year. And then Mike's team provides us a communication specialist that really helps get our message out in print and in social media. All right, first section of our budget today is highways and streets. We'll cover engineering, streets, storm, and traffic and lights, and their key mission statements are listed on the, on the slide. All right, just like in the other operations, you see the infographic that's on the side that really captures kind of the key drivers of what's happening here. Our, our operation and capital budget for highways and streets, that again includes engineering and streets, 89.6 million. We do take, to make sure we can keep travel commutes and efficient as possible, we'll take almost 500 traffic counts a year. We strive hard to keep our, our pavement condition index at 70. One of the ways we can translate that is to actually make positive improvements to over 700 blocks of streets each year. And, and the other part of the infographic is that 8,500 streetlights have been changed out to LED. We're about 40% of the way through that goal. And so right now, with current funding levels, we expect to reach a complete LED streetlight system by 2028. Some of the areas that we want to just bring to your attention is for scaling for growth is that as we continue to grow, we add miles and miles of streets each year. Dustin and his team really scaled up last year to tackle more neighborhood street issues and also make more permanent repairs. And so one of the, one of the pictures that you see there is, is an area that we're piloting. Last year, we brought in a small paver that made our, made some of those smaller repairs more efficient and a longer-term solution. This is a mill that we're demoing, will likely also demo it next year as well. The ones that we have today are either on the front of a skid steer or they're mounted on the front of a large loader. You don't have very good view of them, you don't have great control, and they, from a capacity and/or self-loading, they just don't sort of measure up to a self-propelled self-loading. And so this one has been a really good addition. Again, we expect to probably run it for another year and then make a decision after that if it makes sense to add it to the fleet. One of the, one of the areas, these are the general fund areas that we've asked for your support. It's getting harder and harder to actually have qualified, skilled individuals actually be there for our summer program and our winter program. And so three of our FTE requests here are equipment operators, one being a lead and two being regular equipment operators. And then the traffic and streetlight locating, we did a deep dive and really looked at what that band of work is. We had highly skilled, trained people doing our utility locates. The business plan, we looked at with the mayor, and we said just in one snapshot last year, we had about 65,000 locate tickets. After you clear the ones that we don't have a utility in the air, we still have to go to the field for about 25,000 of them. And then that has kind of really gone on steroids this year with VAS build-out and Midco's announcement for their build-out. And so this team would ask for two additional locators. They'll be priced at a lower amount than like a lineman or a traffic signal technician, but ultimately somebody that we can start to build a locating team. So just to give you a perspective, with the high volume of locate tickets, last week, we had nine people out locating utilities. We've got a 48-hour turn once a locate ticket comes in, whether you're a homeowner that has a fence that you want to put in, or VAS or Midco, we've got 48 hours to get out there unless it's an emergency locate. Couple other things just to bring to your attention. We mentioned the LED traffic management in one app. We've got a couple of stats to show you, so. So that picture in the upper left, that's a fisheye camera, so that's a new process that we've tried in a couple of intersections. If you look close, right in front of the lead cars is either a red or a green dot. This is technology that we can use a fisheye camera, one camera at an intersection and actually do all the vehicle detection. And so when a car pulls up, it's looking for a different shade of gray and then ultimately sends a signal to the controller that there's a car there and that, that functions as the detection instead of either putting things in the pavement, under the pavement, or specific cameras to actually look at each lane. So we're looking forward to see how those work out over time. And then the traffic calming picture, that's on 33rd Street today. Number of calls from residents that between Minnesota and Cliff Avenue, it's a, with the lack of on-street parking, it's, it's an area where people drive fast, so we've got a current pilot going to see if that's going to actually calm the traffic. One of the areas that last year, the All Saints neighborhood, asked for a traffic calming study pilot was near 17th and Phillips. After we went to the field and made some adjustments with property owners, then this year, we're already converting that over to concrete. So anyway, when those, when those traffic calming opportunities come up, the traffic team really has got some good tools to go out and first pilot and if they make sense, implement. All right, Sioux Falls One Link, this has been just a fantastic tool to add to the ways that our customers can reach us. That's, that was a screenshot of just this last week, over 35,000 requests have come in. Just to give you a perspective, we get about 5,000 pothole requests per year through the app. Roadway lighting is next at about 1,000 per year. And then the, the rest are asphalt issues, sidewalk repairs, high weeds, graffiti, and then in the wintertime for either plowing and/or sanding requests. It's been a fantastic addition for people to actually reach us 24/7. And of course, if you still want to call us, we've got a Public Works One Contact Team that you can call us at 367-8600. All right, we've got a number of projects that we just, we want to highlight a few. We've got a couple of drone shots that are always make it more fun to look at a project, but a lot of concrete and gravel to talk about and some asphalt as well. And so the top list of projects are actually city-funded capital, and then the ones, there's two at the bottom, those are actually partnered projects that it's a, it's a marrying of the DOT's funds and the city's funds. So we'll give you a few to perspective here. So this is the, oh, sorry. So this is the interchange of Marion Road and I-90. The DOT and the city partnered, the DOT actually advanced about $1 million for us to expand these off-ramp to add some capacity, but also signalize these with the incoming Amazon and now FedEx and ultimately CJ Foods. This work's done by a local contractor and is nearly complete. And then the, oh. And we'll give you a little different perspective here going north. We sped up the video because that's as fast as we're going to get packages now that we actually have Amazon in town. Amazon, through their traffic study, had to do, had to build both their entrances and they'll signalize their main entrance. We, we did, once all those lanes were added, we did, I'm going to just pause it for a second, we did flurry seal the entire area that's been currently hard-surfaced, and then we're actively in design. I apologize for that. We're actively in design to design the balance of Marion Road as we go north, so this gives you a little bit different picture. That's Foundation Court to complete the horseshoe, and then as you go up, this is the main entrance of Amazon. This is the secondary entrance of Amazon. This is North Foundation Court. And then ultimately, we'll, we'll, we'll advance this design all the way up to the Renner Crooks Road. The county is currently studying the Renner Crooks Road to see what they need from a capacity standpoint at that intersection, and we're evaluating the best way to actually cross the Burlington Northern. We feel it's a good practice, and this one is justified to actually take the road up and over the rail, and so we'll be, once we advance that design to a point, we can give you an update, we'll come back and share it with you. All right, next one that we want to highlight is finally, we're going to get started on Minnesota Avenue. That's a key gateway into the city of Sioux Falls. Not only are we going to sort of enhance and beautify the corridor with a raised median, but there'll be a much different pedestrian experience with Marion, with Minnesota Avenue. There'll be a five-block project that really kicks this off. And then some of the key utilities that lie underneath Minnesota Avenue will also be reconstructed. Water has one of their key transmission mains that comes from the plant that ultimately goes to the water tower over by Sanford. goes to the water tower over by Sanford. That will also be reconstructed with this improvement. Just to give you a flavor of some of the elements that the designers are incorporating into the design, this is a picture of that. Some of the retaining walls, primarily on the east side of Minnesota where the grade change, we'll be doing a concrete board form retaining wall. And then you'll see some of the metal, that Corton steel, that'll get incorporated in to just give it a new and broader perspective. This is the planned view. And so, on the left-hand side is Russell Street. The project will actually start about one block south at Bennett. And then as you see, it'll transition all the way south to Second Avenue. That'll be first phase. So we're excited to finally get started on Minnesota Avenue. We've been talking about it for some time and it's time to get started. The Unity Bridge and Seventh Street cul-de-sac, so to complement all the private investment that's happening downtown with Sherapa and Sioux Steel. And then just the condition of this bridge, it's time to actually renovate this bridge and sort of bring it up to standards, but also improve that section of the River Greenway. Throughout, the mayor, I thought, just had a great idea to, instead of commemorating a bridge with one person, let's create a situation where we can recognize many people on this bridge over the coming years, maybe five, 10, 25 years out. In some cases, create like a mini sculpture walk of people that have made significant contributions to the quality of life of Sioux Falls. So it's been coined the Unity Bridge and the design is advancing. We would expect to probably bid the project in the third quarter of 2022 and do the majority of the construction in '23. It's just another perspective on the bridge. We wish the river was that full today. This gives you a quick perspective of what the Seventh Street cul-de-sac looks like right off Phillips Avenue. Today, we don't have a really good direct access to the Ark of Dreams. And so, this project would enhance the Seventh Street cul-de-sac drive and create more parking. But also, if we can work closely with Ravens and Lloyds to get the necessary land, we could actually create a direct pedestrian walkway from Phillips Avenue to the Ark of Dreams. And so, that work is just getting started. This is the 41st Street project. This project will be bid in December of this year. This is a partnering project with the state of South Dakota. I don't think we ever get tired of seeing this ribbon laid out. And so, this is a, the city of Sioux Falls, part of this is to reconstruct 41st Street. The bookends of this project are from Marion Road to Shirley Avenue. The Department of Transportation will fund the Diverging Diamond new interchange, just a very high-volume, very safe interchange design. It'll be the second one in the state of South Dakota. On the other side of town, Arrowhead Parkway, we continue to work with the landowners to get the necessary lands to make this improvement. Signature has done a significant development in this area and we want to complement it with the increased traffic and make it safer at the same time. Do you see where Six Mile Road today comes into Arrowhead Parkway? It's at a pretty acute angle. This design makes this more of a traditional intersection at a right-turn angle, but it will completely shift how we tie Six Mile Road into Arrowhead Parkway. So we're not quite there with all the respective landowners, but we're working to get to resolution so we can ultimately get this project bid. All right. Let's transition to storm drainage. Storm drainage, a very important project. Finally, after 2018, 2019, two of the wettest years, the storm drainage team has had a little time to breathe and kind of, and start to plan forward again. It's a $15.2 million operation. There's 15 full-time employees with the two that we're requesting. One of the things that we're scaling for growth is that with the continued build-out of the storm drainage system, it's important that every five years, we get into those pipes, get them cleaned, also the intakes. And with the current crews, we're just not able to, there's only a certain amount of capacity you can do with a crew. And so, last year, your support was to add a, you supported us in adding a jet truck. That takes 18 months to get. And so, this budget would ask for the two individuals that will make the crew and complement that jet crew. We also strategically made, created a levee maintenance crew with the importance of the levee and the importance of having a certified levee system as we, as we, you know, continue to protect the property of the city. On average, we will jet out about a half-million feet of storm drainage pipes, clean over 3,000 of them, and there's over 1,200 acres of drainage land that is maintained. One of the things that we're excited about, that we've talked about in the past, is that, you know, when new subdivisions are built, not all the time is the grading right. And then ultimately, new homeowners go in and then they have drainage issues right away. So now, we've staffed this appropriately to actually get eyes on every buildable lot and to ensure at least when that subdivision is built, it's graded per plan. We always know that there's going to be sheds and raised gardens and things like that that come after the subdivision is built, but the goal is to actually reduce the number of concerns that come from residents and to get that subdivision off on the right foot. We are going to increase the amount of inlet repair. There's just a substantial amount of deterioration that is happening. We normally spend about $200,000 on reconstructing intakes, that'll go up to about $274,000. We've got a couple of capital projects we'd like to show you. So the next regional BMP, which is a regional storm drainage facility, you know, several years ago, that the city moved forward to a more regional approach, so not every property had to have their own site-specific one. And so, if you're in, if you have property that's in an area that's served by a regional facility, you end up paying a respective platting fee for that, but then you free up the land on your development. This particular one will serve an area of about 457 acres. It'll hold about 47 acre-feet of drainage. And it's just an opportune timing to make the excavation for this pond and use it on Veterans Parkway as they build that out. This one is just east of 85th Street and Cliff Avenue. All right. The next one is in the southwest part of the city. It's been a multi-year project to reduce the 100-year floodplain on a number of properties in southwest Sioux Falls. Ultimately, we're going to be opening up and improving the conveyance of over 6,000 feet of a drainage channel, six culvert crossings. We're excavating to create more storage volume in three ponds, Southern Vista, Candlelight Acres and Sunset Ridge. And then we did do two strategic property purchases so we could open up the overland conveyance. Both those properties have, were willing sellers and those houses were raised. The red is underway this year. The light blue is in '22 and the green is in '23. All right. Let's transition to Fleet. Fleet's a very active team that's critical to our operations to make sure that all the rolling stock stays on the road. It's a $15.9 million operation. It keeps almost 1,750 pieces of rolling stock moving. It's 26 employees, a very talented group of mechanics that work at Fleet. They essentially work closely with finance to make sure that the maintenance, purchasing, writing bid specs, and ultimately procuring the equipment is done. One of the, one of the key things that's really helped Fleet is that when a piece of equipment is surplus, we're starting to sell those on a quarterly basis through Purple Wave, an online auction. It just frees up a lot of space that's on the campus instead of having those things happen just once a year. The main capital investment that we'll do is with the four fueling stations that we have, we're going to start to strategically replace those underground fuel tanks. Many of them are over 30 years old and their paths are useful life. We will be piloting. Our sustainability coordinator will be really happy and she's expressed her excitement that we'll be purchasing and piloting the first electric vehicle for the city. We'll pick a team that we can run it side-by-side with a combustion engine and ultimately just to get to understand all the differences between the two and how we ultimately scale that going forward because we do believe that electric vehicles will be a part of the solution going forward. All right. Utilities. We'll cover landfill, power, water and water rec. Okay. First, for the sanitary landfill, we've had a, just, you know, I think obviously everyone is seeing the amount of growth that's happening in the Five County area. We've seen such good participation with the landfill free pass. We have weekends where we'll have 1,500, 1,600 people come through the scale. And to minimize their wait time, Donnie and his team added a different, added an additional lane with a climate-controlled, fully-functional building out there on the island. And the way that we've managed and staffed that additional lane to cut down on customer wait time has been with part-time individuals. There's been two of them. We're recommending to actually add a third scale, another scale operator, and then we'll avoid having those two part-time individuals. Again, it's just like streets, it's been very hard to actually get good committed part-time help to actually run this six-day-a-week operation. So we'd ask for your support in that. Building and site improvements, you know, just again, with the growth of the area, we've got a really good, safe customer convenience area at the landfill, but it's at capacity most days. And so, we'll be looking for ways to, we can add to that capacity, keep still a very safe environment for the customers that come through there, including what the future of the scale house looks like. And then investing today for better tomorrow, I will take a look at. One of the things that we wanted to share with you is that, and we've talked about this in previous budgets, is that we, in wet years, the black water that comes out of a landfill is called leachate. And we, in some cases, are trucking leachate seven days a week from the landfill to the wastewater plant. The team did a study and looked at what the rate of return would be if we actually just built a pump and a five-mile force main into town. That rate of return was less than seven years. And so, the force main is now installed and soon we'll build, we'll bid the more components of the lift station so we can much more efficiently transport that leachate that just runs right down a gravel road, 57th Street into town. All right. Light and power and traffic. So, we have, we've started to convert some of our overhead power in that mature part of town over by St. Francis House to underground. And so, last year, we did five square blocks. This year, we're doing design and then next year, we'll do about five more in that wittier neighborhood. It's just a significant improvement to those real mature neighborhoods. Also, looking at our wood pole program, make sure we have good, healthy wood poles to hold up the remaining distribution system. And then we have, as it's come through the capital plan for a number of years, we are actively starting the design of the new facility that'll be located out on Water Rec's property to actually bring both the traffic maintenance and the light and power distribution team together. And we've got a picture of that for you. And then it's, you guys have supported and approved the master license agreements for Verizon and AT&amp;T. We're seeing the five-cell, 5G small-cell system get built out in town. There's just some stats. This utility is debt-free. It's $8.1 million operation. It's 2,900 active customers, 93 miles of distribution, and again, 12 employees. Here's those two projects we highlighted. So the area that is just immediately east of Cliff Avenue, that's bound by the blue line, that would be the target area for us to take the overhead power and put it underground. And then ultimately, at the intersection of Sycamore Avenue and 60th Street North, is that footprint of land that Water Rec has identified that they don't need and it'd be ideal location with the Veterans Parkway and 229 for us to locate this team out there. Nice thing too, is that Public Safety Training Center is just to the north, Water Rec is just to the south. And so, should be some really good synergy with having this new facility out there. One of the limitations of that made us start to look for a new site is with the FAA flight regulations, their current location, we're not able to actually build near that area where they currently exist behind the water plant with new flight regulations. So, it was a good exercise. Ultimately, this will be a long-term, good 100-year decision on getting them in a good, modern facility. All right. Water purification. So water purification, always looking forward. As I've said a number of times, I think one of the best decisions the city made back in the 90s is, you know, signing up for Lewis and Clark. And we've just maximized Lewis and Clark. And any typical day right now, we're probably buying 18 million gallons of water from Lewis and Clark. And it's the same treatment process that we have, being connected to the Missouri River has just been terrific. We also know that we still have water rights in the Big Sioux River. We've got to continue to maximize them to meet our customers' demands. I sent you a note last week about the river levels. We did get a short reprieve, so we'll likely, we'll likely be back down into those lower river levels and restart that 10-day clock. But we'll do our best to keep you posted so you, so you're aware where our customer demand is and where the river levels is so we can actually best maintain our water sources. We did fund a, with your support last year, a new well, a new horizontal collector well. So we'll show you what that looks like. And then scaling for growth, this is again, another utility locator. This one would be funded with this enterprise fund. And then we've contemplated the additional water program lead for a few years. Just the size of the programs from our conservation program, our tower lease program and the backflow prevention program are the two additional employees for water that we would ask for your support. As you know, water rates are steady, no planned increase through 2023. This is a very, this water, this utility's in very good shape. All right. Capital, just to give you a picture of what you'll see here is source water improvements. That's essentially, that's a well field improvement and/or transmission main that brings it in from the well field. We'll give you a picture of what our investment will be in the airport industrial park area. There's just been a lot of good investment from private companies in the airport industrial area and we want to make sure we backstop that with a good water system. And then we'll also show you a number of transmission mains to make sure we can keep the water moving around town. So this is a picture of a source water well just north of Sioux Falls. The city has almost 70 wells between Sioux Falls and Baltic. This is a high-volume well. And then we'll give you a picture where the next one is getting built. So this picture was just taken last week. This will be a high-volume collector well. Well, once we actually get started sinking the shaft, but this is, this is one of those horizontal collector wells that they'll build a case on, about 16 feet in diameter, that they'll build it and sink it all the way to the bottom of the aquifer, then they'll drill out probably four or five times, almost 200 feet. So we'll have somewhere between 800 and 1,000 feet of effective screen to actually harvest water from one well, one road, one electrical feed, one generator. And so, they're just a very efficient way to harvest water. This was an opportune land acquisition. Just a couple of years ago, the landowner had actually bought about 170 acres, moved most of the building eligibility's up to the highway and then put this land back on the market. Our study that we had with the USGS to really help inform us of where is, where are some of the deepest parts of the aquifer, where's some of the best water-saturated soils. This particular piece of land kind of lined up with both of them. And so, we were fortunate that we reached an agreement with the landowner and purchased the property. So the city purchased this 170 acres that will likely hold at least two of these high-volume collector wells. So here's the first one that's getting built. Here's a picture of the airport industrial park, just those pink lines are either line replacements, line upsizing, or they're loops of lines that don't exist today. And so, we were anticipating doing a portion of this this year and the complement next year, but we're actually going to bundle all this and go to the market just early next year with one project. So you'll see that. This is an area down by Smithfield Foods where you see all those lines with the red X's on them. Smithfield Foods. And as that transmission line today, that's kind of Xed out. As it comes down the spillway, we've had a couple of breaks. It's in a very challenging area to make a water main repair, especially to the size of the water main that these are. And then it follows the toe of the levee, which is also not very good if we have a break there and we end up having a compromised levee. So the team took a look and seen what steps can we take to actually abandon that. section of those transmission mains, but still effectively move water to the east? So those solid purple lines will get built with this capital plan and then we'll abandon that area that's been Xed out. If you'll drive down in that area, you'll see a number of cranes on the Smithfield Foods site. They're in the process of building about a forty million dollar state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant and that we've been in close contact with to understand that technology. All right, this is an area by Hidden Hills, not too long ago, this development went in, probably in the last decade. This is a twenty-inch concrete pipe that was originally put in in nineteen sixty-four. It now is in the back of some of these properties that timing is right for us to now move it just a little bit to the south, put a new pipe in that old railroad right away and make sure that that twenty-inch pipe is ready for the next seventy-five to a hundred years. All right, this transmission rehabilitation project runs along Kovale Lake. Majority of the pipe will be, will stay in place, we'll just line it. It was originally put in in nineteen fifty-nine. One of the concerns that we have, the bookends of this project are under private land. And so on the north side, it's under a private parking lot and on the south side, it runs under five mobile home, mobile homes. And so part of the rehabilitation will be also to lay new water main to get them outside of private property. And then in twenty twenty-three, there'll be a new interchange built at Benson Road and two-twenty-nine with all the growth and development, industrial growth and development that's happening in that area. And so we'll do some work in twenty twenty-two and the majority of the work in twenty twenty-three to push the sixteen-inch water main across the interstate. This is the water maintenance campus. You guys, in a, a couple of years back, supported a capital plan that actually expanded this building so we could get most of the materials inside. As you guys know, if, if a water main breaks and it's twenty below zero and it's on Christmas, this team will respond and, and mobilize and repair that. This additional structure would actually allow us to get some of the equipment and trucks inside as well, just to be ready to be mobile, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. All right, and last division we'll talk about is water reclamation. A, a lot going on with water reclamation, this capital and operational budget is a hundred and forty, just under a hundred and forty-five million dollars. This, this includes the, the large loan for the plant expansion, which is just about ninety million dollars. This team is fifty-five people. We, we are asking for an additional wastewater operator to help us through the plant expansion, but also get us prepared for the larger plant. One of the areas that we'll, we'll highlight today is that we are studying some future sewerable areas that are on the west side of town and on the southwest side of towns. We'll give you a picture of those. And this is, certainly frames up for a separate discussion with you guys, a much larger discussion that we'll bring in our team at an informational meeting if we can book off some time. There's a lot of interest on the west side. One of the unique things, most cities look out, you know, twenty and sometimes fifty years. The west side looked out a, a hundred years based on normal maturity that we currently see. This would ultimately, over the next hundred years, open up almost thirty-two thousand acres of additional sewerable land. There's a project that's in the capital plan for next year that we'll show you that will open, start to open this land up. It's about nine million dollars. And it really becomes the trunk of the tree. And the reason we've spent some additional time on this is that we want to make sure that if you don't size that trunk of the tree correctly, then you won't get a hundred years of life out of this area. And so it's just been a really interesting project. If you look closely, that blue area that's immediately to the left side of the page, that's Wall Lake. So this sewer study would actually take us out within one mile of Wall Lake. All that land naturally falls from west to east. And so again, we're excited to bring you more details about that. We recently just met with Hartford so we can kind of sync up our two growth boundaries. We met with T yesterday. And then in the southeast area, this area, we've been planning for a couple of decades now. As we still have several thousand acres of sewerable land available today, we know we can't not keep looking forward. And so that will complement the southeast area, that would open up about another ninety-four hundred acres of land. So to give you a picture of where some of those neartime projects are, that, the facility expansion, which I've got another slide for, so we'll talk about that then. Basin fifteen, that is over by basically Twelfth Street and T Ellis Road. That would be that first trunk of the tree, that green line that you see, basin fifteen. And then ultimately, you can just imagine from there, the branch lines will start to come out over time and, and really set the west side up for some nice progressive growth. The next one is basin seventeen, and that's over by, generally by Gage Brothers, and that travels along the river and then ultimately up to Benson Road and turns to open up another two hundred acres or so of the Development Foundation land that's, has been up there generally north and west of the Humane Society. South Side Interceptor Rehabilitation, that's kind of right in the center of, of the city, near the river and two-twinn, and Twenty-Sixth Street. We've got an old concrete pipe there that we want to make sure we get rehabilitated before it fails. And then Pump Station Two-Forty, that's that long green line. After the calculations and the design was set up, that once there's a, a certain amount of flow that's getting to that lift station, we got to put in another force main to ultimately take that to the plant. And that one's actively being designed and, and getting ready to go to the field. And our last slide for the day, let's see where we're at on time. Oh, we're close. I got two minutes to go, counselor. So the, the plant expansion's gone really well. We've hired a really good designer, a really top-notch constructor. They teamed up with Henry Carlson. The design just got to sixty percent and, and that, just as you look at the campus, I don't have a mouse, but there, right next to the admin facilities, the new headworks, those aeration basins, those tanks that you see more to the right, there's three additional lanes getting added onto them. The round clarifiers that are, have the centers white, they'd be four additional final clarifiers. The chlorine contact basin gets improved, the head-in for the electrical gets new and improved. This is what we consider phase one. We certainly were interested to see it repriced. We've, we've certainly heard across the city that construction values are going up. And we have trended that there's costs of the project that are going up, not only with just natural cost increase, but inflation. And so we expect that by the end of August, the project will be repriced, we'll be in a position to come back and talk to you about it at that point. I know Director Pritchett has been asking, talking with you guys and/or Will about a portion of the city's ARP funds to be directed to meet some of the shortfall. And so we would appreciate your support as we really work through. We want to get the liquid stream treatment right and get it done. We're not sure what the future holds, but at least to what we see now, we don't see prices coming down anytime soon. So we'd like to get that work underway. We will be sharing with you soon that, just to get some of the longer lead time equipment, the blowers, the RDTs and some of the site work started, that we'll be issuing a limited notice to proceed of about four million dollars and we'll provide that notice to you, we'll provide that to the construction manager at risk. And that takes me to my last slide, which invites you to come out to any of our operations. We've given some instruments to Jim David to engage you. And if you've looked through some of those options and, and signed up for one of those operations, we'd love to get it scheduled and, and ultimately get you out to see some of the operations. And we cover a lot of projects and budgets today, but our, you know, our, our true thing that we'd like to show you is our team, a very talented team, and they'd love to get you out on their sites. So, thank you.
Counselors, all enter questions? Counselor Soberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You always have plenty to do, don't you? By the way, I don't know who came up with the investing today for a better tomorrow theme, but it's very catchy, I like it. I think it's about nine or ten times I've heard that today. Jetting, can you remind me, you went through that, what is that again? And what is the piece of equipment that you said, didn't you say something, we've been waiting for eighteen months to get it?
It's a jetting truck. So as you drive around town, there, most of ours are yellow, they got a big tank, they've got a big vacuum, but they, they hold water. And so a two-person team goes out and they jet out a sewer or a storm sewer. And then, then the vacuum piece, as they're pulling that back, vacuums up all the debris. And so they take, take a long time to actually place the order and then ultimately get built. So I would expect that they are, Dean, what do they cost? Right, so they're, they sell them that you can actually suck up an entire cement block with them. And so they're, they've got a lot of power.
Right.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay, thanks. And my other one, real quick, again, I, there's probably lots of things to ask here, but just a couple of things that stuck out. Like in the fleet part, fuel tank replacement, that's not usually too cheap either. What is something like that to take the tanks out and get all that done and how long a project?
I may, I need to lean on Dean for that.
Dean Borcard, Business Operations. As far as our commitment, we are just replacing tanks. So at this point, you know, it's a multi-year program, we have four fueling sites across the city. The newest one is at sanitary landfill, we will not be, we'll be required to replace those because the, those were actually installed within the last ten years. But we will start on sites like the street fleet campus and/or park shop and the school facility over by the Denny Sanford Premier Center and, and its rotation. And I think there, it varies by year, but you know, it's around two million dollars, I think we have in the capital plan. I didn't look at that exactly beforehand, but it will be a staged approach where we take one site down, do it during the year and then have the other sites available for our teams. It wouldn't be all of them at one point in time.
Yeah, because that's a big process with testing and everything else, taking them out and.
Correct.
Right.
Yep, I mean, ultimately, we're, you know, we continue to evolve those fuel sites. The unique reason why we, we look at it from a, from our standpoint, we are a twenty-four hour, seven day a week operation, especially in the winter, for removing snow, having those sites available where we're not trying to share a fueling site with others. It, it's been a very advantageous program for the city.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for the presentation, a lot of good stuff. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. Quick question, deals with some pump collection systems?
Yes.
As you know, we've been discussing this for seven years for, for me. And I see we have just under two point five million in the CIP for, over the next five years for that again. A portion of that is for existing urbanized areas to resolve existing issues. Some of that is going to go for reimbursement of materials in new developments. And you know to date, that in the new developments, we've had a pathetically poor connection record with individuals connecting to these systems. Despite the fact that we're investing in the materials, the developer is actually installing the materials. Pre-COVID, we had had some discussions on how to improve that connection rate. Are those discussions still going on? Because I'd love to wrap this up in the next nine months.
Right. And probably we'll bring up Andy to speak to it, but certainly the retrofit is been a really good program because you can go out there and you can target areas that have high pumpers and, and make those connections. They are taking a holistic look at the whole program, whether it stays in the backyard, whether it transitions to the front yard, but I'll let Andy have some perspective.
Andy Berg, City Engineering. Yes, we've been actively researching different options for this, working with the development community. One of the things we've looked at is expanding that retrofit program. If we look at potentially, if we were to go away from the new installations totally, expanding the budgets for just the retrofits and doing more retrofits just in the need, areas that need them. There's a lot of pieces that go with that because the developments still have to be designed to accommodate a future one because if you don't have the depths there, that, that's an issue. So we've been looking at that. As Mark noted, we've been looking at other options too, where moving them to the front yards where there are less impacts potentially, but you have to go on both sides of the street to do that. And so Aaron and our team has been working a lot with the development community on that, trying to find some solutions. Potentially going away from it has been something that the development community has brought forward recently as well. We're hesitant to do that because they provide an opportunity to help dry out backyards that have soggy backyards. You can put drain tile in and put that into those systems if that's not there. It's just one less tool in our toolbox for backyard nuisance complaints. But it, we are seriously looking at whether just going away from it and putting all the dollars into the retrofit program would be an option. The development community likes it because there isn't that upfront cost for the installation, but hopefully have some answers for you soon. Like I said, Aaron has been digging into that. One thing that we have found through this investigation is our connection rate is actually higher than what we'd originally conveyed to you historically because some of those permits had been doing, going through the general utility connections instead of specific to the sump pump. But yes, the connection rate's still in that twenty to twenty-five percent range.
Okay, well, thank you. And I hope that we can continue to pursue that, like I said, in the next nine months, actually. Because I would contest that the upfront cost is well, money well spent and it's the best insurance policy you're ever going to get to keep your basements dry over the long haul. So that's, that would be my message to the development community, that sure, we can invest an extra five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars in an upgrade in carpeting or something, but at the same time, we want to keep that carpeting dry and not have to rip it out and replace it.
Thank you. Counselor Breckie?
Just a couple of quick statements. One is, I am so happy to see that you're purchasing an electric vehicle. That signals to me a real commitment to our air quality. And you and I have had this conversation about, I think about a year and a half ago, and we stood right over there and I said, if we do this right in this city as we grow, we could be a city that never has air pollution because of the opportunities that exist and the ad, you know, the advancement of electric vehicles into the system. And, you know, I'm, I'm excited that you're, you know, you're, you're going to pilot this, you're going to see where it goes. And I would say to my fellow council members, I think there's some additional opportunities for us as a council to do things to incentivize the community, you know, into making the transition to some electric vehicles that could keep our air quality standards where they are right now. At the time we had the conversation, you said, I said, have we ever reached in any of the danger zones? And you said, a couple of times, you know? So we're getting there with our growth. So I, I'm really excited about that. And then also a conversation that we had about, you know, the water reclamation plant and the good planning that was done twenty years ago, I said, what are you doing, you know, for the next generation? What are you planning for that? And I can't wait for your presentation because clearly you're looking that far ahead into that twenty-year, fifty-year, hundred-year realm, which is what we need to do for the future people who will be sitting in these seats and standing at this podium to do the same kind of good groundwork for them that was left for us. So I can't wait for the presentations. I'm really glad to see this as something that you guys are digging into and I look forward to the details. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Kind of a question, kind of a statement. So I want to talk a little bit about traffic calming. I know some neighborhoods love it and some will come behind you and take down the little pylons. Depending on what neighborhood you're in, I think Greg knows which section I'm talking about as well as you. But, so my question is, is, is there a way for us to be proactive instead of making the streets this wide and then we come in and we add more concrete and we bring them in this far because now it's not safe? So instead of, and I know things evolve and change and all of that, so I get that. I, I'm not pointing a finger at anyone, I'm just trying to challenge us and everyone to be proactive that we love to go fast, but not on my street. Kind of mentality, because we're asking the contractors to come in and put these gigantic streets in and then everybody complains and says, oh, wait, we want to slow down the traffic, but not everybody does. So my question is around that and what we can do when the streets are going in to address some of that, because it comes down to affordable housing and all of the plating fees and the roads and the curbs and finding ways that we can trim, trim some fat. roads and the curbs and finding ways that we can trim, trim some fat, really.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've, um, that's one of the areas in the housing study, um, which is to look at uh Street West. Um, I, I think we've got some room to grow uh in that area. And, you know, we have, we, we'll have developers that will submit plans that are already looking at it and then already doing some choke points, and so they strategically can make some safer neighborhoods. But, you know, I would be the first one to say, I think we've got some room to grow on that. And the retrofits have been good because you've got twenty twenty as um in your back pocket. We're working on one with MB right now because of some of the transitions that they've had near, I think it's Eleventh and Dakota, that, that will start to calm that traffic and make some of that kid drop off much better, um, similar to Seventeenth and Phillips, but those have all been look backs. And so um I would tell you that I think we've got some room to grow, that we'll take that into account.
Thank you. And then my other question is, you know, we have the, I, I've been in cities such as Indiana, states such as Indiana that they love their roundabouts. And I know the first one that went in, uh, Lincoln County, people were freaking out because they've never driven them and they were so confusing. And until you figure it out, it can be confusing. Is that something um that we can utilize? Is it cost-effective? Is it cost-prohibitive? Because we don't need the electrical and whatever, but it is taking a large chunk of land, but the traffic is moving. Is that something that we can look at in some of these kind of areas outside in the joint jurisdiction?
Yeah, and we've, um, well, the one in Lincoln County, I think that was a little bit of a push, but it's been wildly successful.
It's great.
I mean, those roads out there were a parking lot before that, and so now there's just continuous flow and, and I, you know, you start to, sometimes you got to do that first one, it starts to change some mindsets. We're starting to see more of them come in and now in private developments. Uh, we see them as a really good tool. Um, you know, that also reduces emissions, you know, because people are not parked um and sitting there and those combustion engines. And so we see them as a asset. We just got to now strategically start to place them in the right spots.
Great, and then one tiny follow-up. Not that this is maybe, I don't know if this is ready for primetime or not, but I think it's worth noting in that we've been in a few meetings, a few of us and stuff, um, to talk about the budget of looking at quiet zones in the future and what that could potentially look like, because that's going to be a huge investment. And, you know, obviously, if this council doesn't support it, 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 you know, I, I'm hoping that we can talk about it soon enough, garner the support of the community and this council to really talk about what that looks like. But it doesn't come without a small, without a large price tag.
Right, I think we're supportive of it as well, and so, um, and, you know, I think initially we'll look at Weber Sixth and Eighth. Um, one of the areas that our consultant brought up is that there's a unique area where the bike trail crosses uh just north of LSS. That that's going to be unique, how they handle that. Um, but we did the, you know, the small concept study to see what those quiet zone intersections would look like, and, and now we're already moved forward, especially with all the development that's happening downtown. So I think we're all set to learn a lot. Our team's actually never been through one, but um we're supportive of it and we'll find a way to advance it.
And thank you for being proactive in that. And when I said not, this council being, I haven't talked to my colleagues, so I don't know if people are supportive of it or not, but um just the point saying it's being studied, but I know it's going to kind of cost a chunk of change, and so we want to be mindful of that too, that, making sure that we're um watching that and moving it forward appropriately and making sure that we've got the money for it too, so. Thank you.
Councilor Knightzer?
Couple of things, but I would follow up on what Council Erickson was pointing out. Um, a, as you know, I'm also big on walkability and I know we're trying to do what we can, but those pilots, keep doing those pilots, because the benefit of those is when they do work, uh, then people see that it works and then it gets adopted and then they, they want to do it in their neighborhood, whereas i- if you haven't seen it, there's concerns. And, and you know the challenges. I mean, it, during the summer, the concerns we get from, from our citizens is people are driving too fast on our street. And then I propose, well, we can narrow your street, and they say, well, then it's going to be too narrow during the winter, when there's snow. So i- i- it, it, you're kind of at the stalemate. So kind of showing that it would work is, is, is good when we can do it very cheaply and try it, and then you can put in the concrete, so. But to the point, if we can figure out how we can build, you know, do we always need a collector to be eighty feet wide going through a neighborhood which becomes essentially a raceway? You know, maybe it could be narrower. The vehicle detection, uh, the, the fisheye that you showed, do, do you know if that has the ability to detect motorcycles and bicyclists?
I would expect that it would be, is Heath there?
Because that, that, that's always a challenge, is whether those will trip the things in the, in the ground.
I think it does, because it's looking for different shades of gray. It's not looking for a weight or break in an electric field like some of the other detection, and so um I knew you'd have a question that would uh trip me up, so I'll make sure I follow up, so.
And, and will it also detect, because Heath has told me this has been in, in, in previous years, one of the issues would be people would go so far over the line that they wouldn't get detected, and now we're having people that are going so far bu- before the line.
Right.
And stopping, that they're not being detected. Does it have some margin?
So those zones are fairly large, and once a different shade of gray pulls in, it detects them.
It knows.
And so, but we can give you some more information on those. They also, uh, not only does Public Works use them, but many other departments use them, including police. And so there's just, um, you know, those, those, um, and, and even if we have a construction project over here, but if we have a series of cameras, Heath can actually pull them up and see, okay, where's the traffic being distributed? Do I have to change some green time to kind of modify those signal timings to get through a construction project? So we're actively building out more and more cameras for multiple reasons.
Okay, and would, um, cameras that could go in for just general public safety for potentially surveillance, is that anything with you or is that more in the, in the PD department to talk to them?
But they're, um, they're, if they're at intersections, we work together. If it would be outside of an intersection, say in an alley, I would say that that's probably PD, but I don't think we do those things.
Okay, uh, and then I may have some questions, obviously, as we go forward on the big stuff. This is incredibly trivial, but out at the waste, or not the wastewater, the water plant, can we get a new sign for the, it seems like there's like letters missing and...
I'll see if Gavin can afford that.
It seems a little, we must be able to get you something that's a little nicer.
Is it a wood sign? Is that the one you're...
No, it's like, on, on the, on the actual, on the actual thing, it seems like there's a letter missing or something and it says like, otter plant or something, or...
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
I, I don't know, it, it looks pretty sad, so.
All right, we'll take a look at it.
At least it did a few weeks ago.
We try not to put any signs on that type of infrastructure, but we'll take a look at it.
Well, maybe it's like old letters that used to be on there and it's just like fading and whatever.
Councilor Starr?
Oh, yes, thank you. I thought there was one in between me. Director, thank you. Uh, the first place I wanted to concentrate was the Renner Crooks exit road, or you know, the Renner Crooks Road going south on Marion Road. That's going to be a shortcut really quick. Is there anything, as things open up in Foundation Park, that we can do to make that gravel portion as safe as possible? I see that becoming a, a shortcut really quickly that people will move, and I'm sure it's been a topic of, of, you know, is it extra grading? Is it the dust control? Is it uh lane narrowing or calming to, to keep that under control?
So we have been grading it and we will dust control and, and in, you know, in the recent years, it hasn't been as much because we've had more rain. Uh, this year it's been dry, but we're actively, you know, it's our intention to actually do a grading project next year and then start to advance the utilities, and then we'll successively build that out. So I would expect by the end of, say, twenty twenty-four, that's completely hard surfaced. And so, but until then, we'll stay on top of it.
Or the PD, I guess I'll, we'll talk to the new chief too as well, because that's going to be an area that's going to get, I think, interesting rather quickly, so.
I agree.
Um, obviously under control. Uh, the other thing that you, you talked a little bit about the wastewater treatment plant at Smithfield and understanding what they're doing and how it fits with, you know, them being one of our largest customers, at least for freshwater and probably wastewater as well. What did you mean by that we were trying to understand or continue to work with them?
Just that they are, they're very advanced, so they do all their own wastewater treatment and they discharge it directly into the river. And so it'll be one of the most advanced plants in the state. Um, and also, when you're in the food industry, you don't want to have any violations. And so we just feel like it's a, it's a very much a leadership move that they're making to um make that type of an investment. And also, um, you know, anytime there's new technology that comes into our market, we want to learn about it as well. And so we have a great relationship with them. Uh, they were just out at the wastewater plant the other day looking at our, our bio solids, um, uh, cake dewatering piece, and so we share a lot of knowledge. But we've just been, uh, the other thing they've done on the steward of water is over time, at one time, they used to, uh, they used to use about threefold of water what they do today. And so they've been great stewards of the water resources, and they have told Gavin and the water team, they expect that they can maybe shave that off maybe another ten percent. Um, and so even with their increasing capacity and, and very active operation, for them to be a good steward on the water use and on the wastewater treatment side, I think it's just great for our rivers and streams and our recreation and everything else, so that was, that's really the angle I was taking it.
No, I appreciate that. Uh, the one other direction that I wanted to head a little bit is earlier in your presentation, you talked about employees um with the locator team. Is there a way, as we, I was trying to think of the right way to say this, but as we downgrade the skills that are required for the locator team and where we position those folks, can we continue to train them and include training as part so that they can become long-term members of the team rather than just looking at them as, as locators? The thing that I, we talked about it uh last week at an informational about how important it is to make uh folks, our providers, um, long-term employees. And the things that we've seen in uh facilities and how that's made a difference by bringing part-time people and making them full-time and giving them benefits and ma- giving them a career a- as they move forward and how successful the facilities team has been with that. So I wanted to make sure that that's part of the planning process.
Yeah, no, I think that that's good, and if I captured it like that, I apologize. It's, um, I think, you know, we see, there's a, there's a number of private companies in the area. Uh, we expect to be above that market, um, and ultimately so they will feel like they're good long-term employees. But, you know, if you think about what they do every day, they'll be throughout the entire city, they'll be very proficient with the GIS system, the mapping system, so I would expect that those skills will translate. And um just like in a number of operations, people will come into one division, they'll see an opportunity in another and they choose to move up, and that's what we hope that they actually do, they have very successful careers at the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question might be the easiest. Do you think I can handle a diverging diamond?
I'm confident you can.
Um, second, um, so Councilor Knightzer hit on a um idea that I talked about with Director Grigsby and then Chief Burns at the time, uh, putting cameras in some of the, you know, light poles and different things down Phillips Avenue, but also encompassing that in your Minnesota uh avenue improvements, which I think is a great idea. So I'd, you know, encourage you to work with uh Director Grigsby and uh Chief Toome to see that through, because if we can enhance our safety while we're doing these projects and, you know, create economies of scale, that'd be awesome. Second, um, on page sixty-six, the Unity Bridge?
Yes.
Will that have uh lighting features to enhance that, uh, you know, the underscaping of the bridge? I don't know if that's what you call it, but...
Yes, it'll be a little different than what the A Street Bridge is. I know the mayor just invited you guys um on this Friday, it's the first Friday, we're going to actually have the commemorative lighting of the A Street Bridge, those arches. And so we want to make sure that Sixth Street Bridge is a nice complement to that with uplighting and um under, underneath lighting as well. So one of the things we've asked to add to the team as a lighting specialist like we did with the A Street Bridge, so.
I think that will only enhance our downtown area, of which we have a lot of private investment and public investment going in. And to enhance that Minnesota Avenue from our airport to downtown?
Mm-hmm.
That's just going to be a, an exciting time. And then finally, this is another comment, not a question, which maybe this was time for questions, but I think anything we can do to get land uh development ready, including your uh plan on page eighty-nine, which is the thirty-two thousand acres, that's going to help us alleviate some of the stress on our housing and get that land in our developers' hands so that they can put up houses as fast as they can. Uh, because that's what they're doing today, and you know that better than any, and you're the blocking and tackling of making that happen, so, so thanks for your work and your team's work, definitely.
You're welcome.
Seeing Noah Han, I have one question. On page seventy of your presentation, you talked about a regional BMP, best management practice. In layman's terms, would that be considered a pond, a swamp, uh...
A detention facility, so as big rain flows come through, it'll, it'll get treated in there, there'll be a forbey where there's some of the uh particulates settle out and then it'll uh transition through there and then slowly release. And so um think about it as a large storm drainage uh pond.
And, and the reason I bring that up is we continually hear from residents that are disturbed because there's mosquito breeding habitat in their backyard. And I want to, is, if we go forward, if we can avoid that, that'd be, that'd be awesome.
Okay, sounds good. Well, thank you very much, we appreciate your time today. I'll turn it back over to Sean Pritchard.
Just a, we need a request. At what point do we need to cease for public input or anything? Is there, you have a dead start time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't have to stretch to get to that point. If you can get done earlier, that's good too.
We're in good shape then, perfect. So I have one, uh, one, or actually three different budgets yet, uh, that I'll be talking about the, here this afternoon, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you have related to these particular budgets as well as just the general financial overview of the city. So uh, these are fairly quick, so they'll uh shouldn't take too long, and then we can kind of open it up to any other general questions that you have. Uh, with, with centralized facilities, uh, you did get an opportunity to have Tom Heber speak about uh centralized facilities a couple of weeks ago at an informational, so I'm not going to try to be redundant with some of the conversations he had with you at that time. But a couple of points that I will kind of bring back forward is uh two things. One, uh, our focus has really been in centralized facilities about enhancing and upskilling our trades in regard and utilizing our positions to the best extent possible. So uh, one of the things we did over the course of last year is we have maintenance staff with parking, public parking, we have maintenance staff with centralized facilities. So one of those positions did move over to public parking, or excuse me, to centralized facilities. So you do see an uptick in the amount of uh payroll uh relative to that position within centralized position and, and a, a decrease within public parking as a result of that change. And we're working to, to bring forward more skilled level positions that we can utilize for centralized facilities, but also uh sharing those across the city as well. If it's need is for parks or in public works, uh, the electrician, carpentry positions, as well as HVAC is the next position we're working to target with that. Uh, but overall, there's no increase in requested positions either with centralized facilities or public parking at this time. Uh, the second one is, is truly is a commitment to ongoing support and uh resources relative to centralized facilities. And I alluded to this in the prior presentation, but there are some uh additional funding requests uh that go along with funding this. So we had requested last year as part of the budget cycle to establish the centralized facilities revolving fund, or I shouldn't say revolving, but the, the, the fund in order to be able to be able to sa- uh save funds and be able to position funding as needs and projects align uh in future years. And so as part of that, we, we built the structure last year but didn't necessarily resource it. And so this year is, is about adding and seeding to that in order to, as we look at some of the projects that are ahead, uh, bringing in the additional funding to help provide the support for those projects. So that includes an increase in, in the charges related to the chargebacks to the departments, and that's about a half million. And you see that hit in various categories for each of those departments, whether uh it be supplies and materials or R and M. So that is encapsulated in the budget. We also have a uh intentional one-time drawdown in two thousand twenty-two, as well as a, modeled into two thousand twenty-three of one million each and, each of those years, uh, and transferred into the centralized facilities fund. And then lastly, we also are working to increase the, the transfer from the sales and use tax fund, uh, which has been hovering, it depends on the year and the number of projects that were programmed for centralized facilities, but trying to get that to a level of around one million dollars a year in each of the years. And so that has been included in the capital program as well. Uh, as we do that, the, the targeting, what we're targeting is, is really kind of looking at all the needs that we have over the next four to five years, and again, uh, identifying what resources are needed uh to stabilize and to be able to fund it upfront, but then[1766.84] but then stabilize that request going forward. So we're not looking to make major increases to the the chargebacks to the departments year after year after year, but really getting to a level where it can support the type of projects that are coming forward. And predominantly, some of those are related to the highways and streets building, parks, campus, renovating fire stations, a lot of these that just are getting tired. They're kind of at that 20 or 30-year cycle and they need to be renovated in lieu of being rebuilt or somewhere else. So we have been working with planning all of that to ensure that we have the resources necessary. It goes back to the discussions we had on the technology fund as well. And I know Counselor Sale, you had kind of a question about how, you know, those are determined, what those chargebacks are going to be. And if you look at that, you know, there, there is a series of major projects that have to occur within technology as as Director Grigsby spoke to, whether it's Office 365, EVONTI, some of the security network upgrades that have to be implemented and improved upon. And so each of those are part of that technology fund, determining how much is necessary to keep that funded over the period in which those projects are going to be moving forward. And then really identifying back to the departments how much their utilization is. And the same thing holds true for centralized facilities as we do go back and model, okay, who is using which facilities and to what extent? Will they be needing major improvements in the next five to seven years and then making the chargebacks accordingly? So the second budget we're looking at is finance and it's a fairly simple budget overall, considering the the amount of, level of activity that runs through our office, whether it's through managing procurement, investing, accounts, budgeting, et cetera. The main change for this year and the upcoming budgets, we have about a three and a half million dollar budget. And the most significant change is a request for one additional FTE. We would request your support for that one FTE to support grants compliance as well as disadvantaged business enterprise opportunities. Both of them are related to federal funding opportunities that we have increased. We certainly seen an increase level of activity in grants to the city, as you've seen with the American Recovery Plan, the CARES Act, et cetera, et cetera. And we have fiduciary responsibility to maintain compliance with each of those grant opportunities to ensure that we continue to have those grant opportunities in the future. So with those additional grants, we have the request for the additional position. And then on the disadvantaged business enterprise side, we have certain requirements when we have contracting, whether typically along with federal grants that we've received through transit or other entities with Public Works that we need to make sure we're staying in compliance with as we go forward. So those are the primary reasons for adding that one additional position with finance. And then lastly, public parking. There is not anything real significant of changing from between 2021 and 2022. If you look at the budget, you do see a small reduction in revenue, in our proposed revenue. And that's just pandemic-related and in terms of timing. I think probably the most, the question we're most likely to get is how we are doing in terms of revenues. I think we've seen, I think we're feeling very confident in where we're at in terms of revenues for the parking system. I was just talking with a parking manager today. You know, if you look at our leasing leases right now, we're probably about 15% where we were pre-pandemic. We are continuing to see new leases going out, soliciting for new leases in our parking ramps. But we also see the changing of the the post-pandemic world where you're seeing more hybrid work or fewer workers. So or people are going to hourly parking instead of leasing parking spaces. So we're stabilized right there right now and I expect that that will continue to grow, particularly over the next 18 months as I guess we continue to return back to normal. As far as we look at our hourly parking, we've been in a very good position. Our off, on-street parking is not quite where it was pre-pandemic, but we also have about, I don't know, 20, 30 spaces, 40 spaces out there currently that are still in the, that are not revenue generating at this time because we implemented those 20-minute pickup spaces during that time period that are still out there. And that's something we're going to be assessing going forward here as as we get meeting with our public parking advisory board. The, we don't have any significant investments in R and M. The the buildings are still, or the, all the, the parking ramps are still inspected annually. And if we have a major R and M project, we'll move forward with that. We do still have the cash capacity to move forward with those type of projects. But most of them are in very good shape. We've replaced most of the the payment systems at all of those ramps. And so there's no, the most significant probably project we have, which is starting this year and going into next year, is replacement of the smart meters, which are currently at 2G technology and need to be replaced, as well as adding additional benefits to having those smart meters in downtown. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have relative to public parking, centralized facilities, finance, or just general finance overview.
Questions? Counselor Starr?
Yes, I'll, I'll jump in because I have a couple on the revenue side when we get back to
Sure.
general, but when we're doing centralized facilities. But the public parking, when you look at the fund balance for net income, it shows a loss of 1.3 million.
Can you tell me where you're looking specifically?
Um, I'm sorry, page 105. I'll probably ask it about a couple of other funds, too, that show.
Okay. Okay, you're speaking of the half million dollar loss there or the 400,000 or actual? Oh, the, under the
2022 budget.
Yep.
Number of 1.36.
Yes. But we have a 1.4 million dollar depreciation noncash adjustment in there.
Okay.
And so that's, that's a noncash loss there.
Okay, from the net.
So net expenditures, we're running at about a negative 25,000 total on more of a cash basis.
Gotcha. And then that's probably the same when I get back to, I think it was the Water Rec Fund, just because as I was flipping through 109.
Uh, yeah, you can see we have 15 million in depreciation expenses in there.
Gotcha. All right, that takes me through those three budget areas.
Anybody else for that? Any other questions for Director Pritchard this time? Counselor Jensen?
Director Pritchett, we have talked over the last couple of months about the ARPA funds that are coming up. And some of the projects that are included in this packet today are included in that. And I know you're reaching out to all of the counselors and have meetings set up with them. As that has just basically finalized and we have that quick turnaround, you've kind of developed a plan around that. And that has helped to, you know, use some of those projects through ARPA funds and allow this budget to be more comprehensive in other projects moving forward. Can you just talk a little bit about how you have created a quote unquote plan for how to use these ARPA funds and how you're going to implement them?
Sure. You know, we have to look at everything comprehensively. So we always knew some of these, everything was evolving over time. And particularly as we were putting the capital program and the budget together. So as we looked at all the priorities that have been brought forward, we always tried to figure out where is the best place to place that project so that we can fund the most projects, maximizing all the sources that we have, but also recognize the timing of what those project needs are. So some of them need to move forward yet this year, some need, could move forward next year. And some are probably a couple of years out from actually needing cash resources invested from the city. And so really looking at it comprehensively. So we looked at the capital program and and where areas in the capital program that can, we can allocate some funds to to meet some of those priority projects that were brought forward. But we're also looking at the the various areas where we have funds sitting, whether they're surplus dollars in sales and use tax. There's funds that are, were remaining from the the funds that we received last year that are still as part of our available balance in the general fund. And then there's the American Recovery Act funds, which we will, we received our first half this year and we receive our second half next year. So we're really trying to align all of those opportunities for funding with all the priority needs that we have going forward. And most of those are not encapsulated in this current budget or capital program. And so we have one opportunity to amend this budget in 2022, or excuse me, this year before it becomes the budget. So if you recall, maybe at the end of last year, we had a discussion about allocating additional marketing dollars for vaccine efforts and so forth in the community. And we couldn't technically amend next year's budget until we were in the next year. Well, you have one opportunity to do that and that is the date in which it is approved, which would be on September 14th and it can be motion amended at that time. So we'll be working in conjunction with you to say, okay, if these are the items we can do in 2022 and then we will motion those on September 14th and then let's supplement 2021 in August for the the other additional items, so.
I just want to commend you on a job well done with the timeline that we have and the time restraints that we have. We had a working session on which you attended and the public had the ability to come and talk to us and 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 get their priorities set up in front of us. So it was a really comprehensive team effort from the council, our staff, and then the administration and your staff. And it was all out there in the public. And I, I just want to commend you and this council for doing that as we have this windfall of of cash because of the, you know, way we've handled our finances in the past. So kudos to my colleagues who have been here for many, 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 many years. And and to you and your staff. So I just appreciate it and it's a job well done and and thank you, sir.
Other questions? I have one follow-up. I'd like to, on page 22 and 20 of your initial presentation, you had a breakdown by department percentage. Year of, for what percentage of the budget's been given to, whether it be wages or whether it be departments? I was wondering if you can provide for us in the future the year-by-year change, how that changes from the last, or maybe just the last five years? Because I know this council, based on the budget that's been presented, we've approved larger and larger percentages for streets and other things like that. So if you could provide that for us sometime, that'd be awesome.
Absolutely.
Seeing nothing else, I'm going to call this budget hearing adjourned. Oh, public comment. God, I always forget that. So public comment. We, yes, he did. Public comment, you have up to five minutes to talk about anything that was addressed earlier in the budget.
So you have to admit that this, this budget is way better than Uther's budget, right? Way better, more organized, more thought out. Let's not build buildings and rooftops and stick people the middle finger. And let's not do an event center where the tech cares are going to be screwed out of money and in lawsuits. And let's not put up a parking ramp and we're going to get screwed and lawsuits, right? So Sean, Sean, you got to give him kudos. Everybody should be standing up and giving this man a standing ovation because he was better than the than the previous one that we had in administration. It was crazy, the one that we had in the youth administration. It wasn't very planned, it wasn't very thought out and nothing. Let's just get hammers and nails and let's start building for the rich people, right? We don't care about our neighborhoods. We don't care about nothing. Let's just build, Uther. Let's just build. Let's get our hard hats on and let's just drive nails into the walls, not thinking in the future or not thinking about lawsuits that's coming within the city, right? So we got to give him big kudos for this because he took every department as budget and made it like it should be. People at home need to realize this budget and you look back through the youth administration's budget and see the difference of what I'm saying here on that. I mean, it doesn't take a third grader and a record scientist to figure this out. So it was very put out, very thought out. And moving forward, we still have to be conscious when we start building buildings here on the the long-term effect of of places here. I'm not saying anything wrong about this, so do not take it offensive here. And maybe they won't get to that. But in our neighborhoods and the poor neighborhoods and the poor sections, and I mean central district, Pettigrew, Whittier, those roads need to be done. So we need to, we need, they look like an earthquake hit it, okay? And I'm not saying that they won't get to it. But I mean, we have, in my neighborhood association, I've had over 30 calls and I went over there and it's big holes, big holes, going 12th and 11th of Summit, goes on 13th and Duluth. So I'm not saying nothing about that they're they're taking up for the rich neighborhoods. I'm just saying in my neighborhood, we need to put a little bit more attention to those roads in my neighborhood and the lights, because there's a lot of lights that they're replacing, but we need those LED lights. I'm in the high crime area here, high crime area. But this is a very well-thought-out process here, way better than the youth administration.
Any other public input? No? No? Now I'm going to call this budget hearing adjourned.